My mayor, my mayor's there.
Down in twenty five, welcome to the town council workshop of your partnership, you take the ball.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Lauren?
Here.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Here.
Mayor, Mayor Button?
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, people, please rise and join me for the pleasure of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let's get rolling. Ralph got our first budget workshop of the year, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As we traditionally host, we host three budget workshops prior to the two regularly scheduled state mandated budget hearings. So I call them the W's versus the H's. So tonight is our first budget visioning session. What we're going to do is basically talk about some of our other priorities that that staff is going to be working on in next fiscal year's budget, based on some of the directions that we received throughout the year with the town council as we develop the the budget. And then we will then host the second budget workshop. We'll be on Wednesday, July thirtieth at six P M. That's when we start introducing the the figures from within the general fund. And then the third budget workshop will be all the funds, which is the general fund, as well as stormwater utility and all enterprise funds. That'll be on Thursday, August the twenty eighth at six P M. Those meetings have been posted on our town website. So with that, Mayor, let's just, if I can, clerk, have a have a quick PowerPoint presentation. We'll run through it. Okay, as I mentioned, is our first budget visioning workshop. I'll briefly go through these because this is very familiar to the town council, just, you know, repeating our mission statement for the town about the, you know, resolution twelve sixty four. The vision, Cutler Bay, we would recognize as one of the most desirable communities in South Florida to live, work, and play. Its schools, homes, parks, and cultural facilities offer an enrichment environment for the children, adults, and senior citizens alike. And its local economy encourages outstanding companies to want to do business here. From our for our strategic master plan, the fiscal viability of town is a primary concern of its elected officials, its residents, its employees. Short and long term financial stability is critical important to the ultimate realization of the town's vision. This serves as the area has four components, fiscal responsibilities, fiscal transparency, capital building programs, and growth management. Just to highlight the work that we've done, we have received the GFOA Excellence in Financing Report sixteen consecutive years. You know, great kudos to Robert and and his staff. And also Budget Presentation Award, we received it for seven consecutive years. And we are going to resubmit on the October twenty twenty six. As I mentioned, this is our first budget visioning workshop. We'll have another one, the second one, on July thirtieth, and then the the third one on August twenty eighth. More importantly, that provides the mayor and town council and and the residents an opportunity to look at where we are heading in terms of the in terms of budget with the figures and the projects. As I mentioned, state mandated hearings, first hearing will be in September, the second hearing will be in September. The reason why there's TBD there because we have to work around Miami Dade County School Board, as well as Miami Dade County itself. So but we know that September will be a busy month. We know that in August, we don't have a scheduled council meeting, but we do have a scheduled budget workshop late in August. So just to kind of set the the fund balance, as you can see here graphically, we see that where we have been growing. If you look at right there, right around twenty twenty is when we had what we call it our get fit plan, when we brought in the financial advisor. There were some tough decisions that we needed to to make collectively. And and since then, we have grown our fund balance reserve to the point that now it's at twenty eight, six, nine, four. Now, recall that is that's a big number there, but as you as you recall, we've committed over six point four million dollars for the solar remediation at Legacy Park. So we know that that's going to go down, but but at least I want to, you know, kind of set the the fund balance and and see how we've been putting away some of those funds. Adopted military rate, this is a busy chart, but what we're wanting to show here is Cutler Bay, where we rank as one of the lowest within Miami Dade County. As you see, our military rate is two point eight, three, three, two. You know, we still, this is a twenty twenty four adopted military rates, so we still maintain our our place as one of the guess, you know, best best deals, right, delivered, right, you know, in terms of services we provide. As you can see that some of the other cities, they're ahead of us. Our military rate chart for the last twelve years. We're going in with this year's budget with the premise that we will maintain the current military rate of two point eight, three, three, two. Key initiatives that we're going to be talking about tonight, where we're going to maintain the level of services. And we're going to talk about key initiatives that are in the general government, Parks and Recreation Department, and Public Works Departments. This PowerPoint summarizes the manager's memo that's in the agenda in case, you know, folks are are at at home and and want to follow along as well. So funded by American Rescue Plan, our standard allowance portion is recall, we received twenty one million dollars, ten million dollars for the general allowance, eleven million dollars for water quality improvement projects. One of the major projects that we're doing right now is the implementation upgrade of town software operating system. I call that our backbone. As you recall, that was a project that we entered in on September, and sorry, in December of last year. And we are moving forward with that. I could tell you that that is moving at at a faster pace than we thought. You know, we have our first department is a finance department that's working through that. I could tell you, Mayor, members of council, Robert Mulder and his staff, when the folks from Tyler meet with them, they meet like six hours at a time. And that takes up a lot in terms of in terms of workload. So kudos to 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 Robert and his staff. Another item that we've been working on, something we've worked on for really for for years, right? If I, if you recall, even back from the Education Advisory Committee, we're working now, we're getting actually closer to what's called the Joint Use Agreement, J U A. Installation of new fencing facilities to secure the buildings, it's going to be forty one thousand dollars, and it's going to be at Cutler Bay High School. What that provides, we will have access to six, over six acres of open field, four basketball courts, and two tennis courts. Then we're also working it as well for the Cutler Bay Middle School, and we'll have access to over eleven and a half acres and six basketball courts. This is something we've been negotiating with Miami Dade County Public Schools. It'll come before the town council, but again, it's a in the overall budget, it's not a big ticket item, but it's forty one thousand dollars. We have to secure the fencing, and we'll get the use of 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 those fields as well. So that's something we've been working closely with the Education Advisory Committee, as well as with the School Board Member Lucy Santos and Assistant Superintendent Rafael Villalobos and his staff. General Government continued. Also something we've been looking at as well is commence the town's five year strategic master plan. I could tell you that we've, just in conversation with, you know, Councilman Duncan, we are, we are going to do that in house. We've looked at some other cities, our sister city, Village of Pinecrest, I spoke to their manager. She does a great job. She does it in house. We kind of looked at that template, and we have some other templates too, that we feel that instead of just bringing in a consultant, kind of learn the town, we know the town, and it's going to be a series of public involvement meetings and and share the vision for the for the town council, because the last one we did was in twenty fourteen through twenty nineteen. And, you know, God rest his soul, was Mayor Sterheim, yeah, I was involved in that. And I think the biggest thing foundation is going to be with that is kind of show what we've done in the past, kind of a self-report card, and what what we've done and what's next and over the horizon. That's very important for the future of the town. We're going to schedule several stakeholder meetings, town council workshop, obviously adopted the master plan via resolution. That's going to all happen, you know, pretty soon here, once we finish up the the summer break and and, you know, we have more folks in town. Another item that we've been working on too is to finalize the sale negotiations with Miami Dade County Environmental Eel Property. As you recall, we reported here, myself and the mayor met with Commissioner Cohen Higgins, we got some clear directions, she's behind it. We've had some great communication with the folks from Miami Dade County Eel, to the point that we are looking at carving out two acres, other eight and a half acres that they will need with part of the overall project. All this will have to come before the council, but this is kind of things initiatives that we're working on for for next year. And our our goal is to move from the B list on that property to the A list. What's the difference? The B list, we get fifty percent of the value, but the A list, we get a hundred percent of the value. Again, we have some encouraging conversations with Miami Dade County Eel Director and Durham staff, so, you know, thank you to those folks that are listening. And that'll come back to the council here pretty soon. Parks and Recreation Initiatives. Something that's been funded through a F D E P grant, which is the fifty three acre restoration project with South Florida Water Management District funded by F D P grant, as well as Town Match, where we are still negotiating with South Florida Water Management District. There's a lot of moving parts there. We want to make sure that the hydrology is right, and there's a permitting that's going to be required there. So that's something that we're we're moving through as well. Something you're going to probably, you know, you're going to see later tonight is to complete the restoration phase of the coastal ridge preserve, the eight and a half acres there. There's an agenda item later tonight for selection of the contractor there, so that's something that we're very encouraged about as well. Then other park improvements that are non-impact fees. Obviously, the big ticket item that we know, it's going to be to complete the solar mediation project for and park improvements for the Blue Herring Park. So not only do we have the solar mediation project there, but we also, and that's something later on, six o'clock agenda, you're going to see putting out the R P, I could tell you that, yes, we did report that we're just trying to try to get some quick quotes from contractors. This is going to be a major project, so we want to make sure we get a very competitive prices there, to the point that you'll see even later, when we've talked about internally, I'm going to be recommending to make that a brownfield. What does that mean? We're estimating this is going to be probably somewhere north of two million dollars, just based on the quantities that we have to remove. By creating a brownfield, we know that we'll be able to recoup, and we're all going to be brownfield experts, right? We're able to recoup up to nine hundred thousand dollars. Besides the fact we're closely with the town attorneys, we already sent demand letters to all the parties that transferred the property to us. So so that's going on as well. So that's a lot of moving parts there, but that's something that's a big initiative. Installation of new perimeter fencing along Saga Lake Park, something that we've been working on. Demolition and design phase of the Baylor Park concession stand, as as I reported to the council, we on the favorable list in the budget list for three hundred fifty thousand dollars for the Baylor Park project as part of appropriation. It did make it to both the House and the Senate, and now it's sitting on the governor's desk, as we all know, we call it the the veto pen. But it's on the list at least. So that's something that we will certainly monitor. And besides the other projects that we have, we have over a million dollars worth of appropriations. This is just one of them there. And then I, and then also complete the master plan for, you know, Veterans Park. I know that the Parks and Recreation Committee provided some recommendations, and then something again, just, you know, diving deep into that and making sure that if we could do it internally, not having a consultant do it for us, absolutely. But I think it's just a matter of a master planning phase of that Veterans Park. Public Works Initiatives, we have a capital improvements project of the grant that we received from F D E P for five point four million dollars. That is to complete the rest of the sub basins within the Saga Bay community. As you know, we were, we visited that site there, where we had that isolated rain for like, what, felt like a week, right, over twenty six inches of rain? And we turned that negative to a positive. We submitted a a grant. There was only twenty million dollars in that pot of money from this game bay fund, and we received five point four. So kudos to Alfredo Nunez and our grants coordinator, Lucetia, for putting that in. We also have the remainder of the capital improvement projects funded by ARPA, Water Quality Improvement Project, seven point four million dollars for the sub bases in the Bell Air Neighborhood and alongs the sub basin areas, one point six, et cetera. That is the area right off of eighty seventh Avenue to the north and south by by one eight four street there as well. Non-ARPA related projects, continue the construction phase for Franger Road as that continues on, then you we have a monthly progress meeting. So that's that's moving along. Complete the bidding phase for the following projects, Caribbean Boulevard, Southwest eighty seven to one eight four, that's funded through F D O T lab grant and town P T P funds. The drainage, neighborhood drainage improvement project along Southwest eighty seven Terrace cul-de-sac. And then we also have the Saga Bay right away improvements adjacent to our Saga Bay newly installed pickleball courts for on-street parking along Southwest Eightieth Street, eight, sorry, Eightieth Court, that we're going to be creating thirty five spaces there. And and then the landscape improvements along Southwest Seventy Ninth Court, which is adjacent to the pickleball courts there, provide that buffer. Other items that we have with state appropriations that we receive direct state appropriation is the Marlin Roads Complete Streets Capacity Improvement Project. Again, that's going to our track work has been, we've completed Oak Color Road Complete Streets Project, Caribbean Boulevard Complete Streets Project, Franger Road Complete Streets Project. The next one we are in in progress are is the Marlin Road Project as well that's under design. We also have the C one hundred B Canal Bank Erosion Protection Project that you'll see us reporting as well. There's been, I want to say hiccups, have been some delays with the type of system the South Florida Water Management District wants us to approve. But now we have to go through the Army Corps, so that's something that we're going to be requesting an extension from F D E P. But we're we're grinding through that process there. That's a C one hundred B canal. We also have the direct federal appropriation for Saga Bay Lake Pump, I call it the pipe there. Mayor, if you recall, that we're going to have the flowway there to kind of part of a restoration, a wetland rehydration project that we're working in partnership with the Miami Dade County Durham. We received a hundred, sorry, a million dollar appropriation. Continuing our on-demand Go Connect free ride services funded through F D O T, we just applied for additional years as well. So we'll see, we'll keep our fingers crossed for that, continue that free service. Another one that's been very important, and we've been involved with Commissioner Cohen Higgins, is requesting the a joint participation agreement, J P A, for approximately nine point nine million dollars to to secure the funding for Marlin Road. Why? Because we've already secured the following. We have a a D O T design grant for five hundred forty five thousand. We had a direct state appropriation for five hundred and twenty thousand. So right there, that's all the design phase on using grant dollars. And if you recall there, we reported that we're actually having a cost benefit analysis included in that report, so we could actually go after some more federal granting as well. We did receive a direct appropriation to Congresswoman Salazar's office of four point four million dollars towards the project. And both Alfredo and you were able to secure an F D O T lab grant of a million dollars. So the the remainder is that nine point nine. So we are in in the phase of, you know, working with through Commissioner Cohen Higgins' office, Miami Dade County Public Works. It's their road, obviously, in our town. We're saying, look, we brought this much money to the table. We need the the rest from a joint use participation agreement. So you'll see a lot of public involvement meetings coming up here pretty soon with the design phase. And Mayor, members of council, that that concludes a lot of the the major initiatives that that we have, you know, coming up for next year. I know a lot of us are capital improvements projects, but again, that's something that just want to provide the council, mayor council kind of a a baseline of what we're working on for next year. With that, I'm certainly open for any any comments, suggestions, and et cetera.
All right, I'll open up the questions, questions from the council.
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ralph, unless unless I'm totally misunderstood or mistaken, I thought that we were like within seconds of starting this the pickleball mitigation, right? I mean, we were talking about, we're just waiting for a permit from Miami Dade County to do the parking spaces, and we're ordering windscreen, and we're doing this and all of that. And that's kind of, if I'm remembering it correctly, that's kind of the the tone that we sent to the residents in, you know, in that area that are being affected by the pickleball courts. And so now I'm kind of concerned or confused that now we're talking about, it shows up as an item for next year and next year's budget. And I mean, are we still moving forward with that, or are we waiting, or what what's the update on that?
Great, great question, Vice Mayor. Actually, the county is now requiring us to enter into interlocal agreement because we are restriping Eightieth Court. That was never the case. That was never the policy. We just received the interlocal agreement, Janero, Fredo, around here, from the county last week. That is news to us. We've never had to have an interlocal agreement for that. We are expedited to try to get that on the July agenda to get that approved by the town council. The interlocal agreement is really a four pager, you know, in a local agreement saying that 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 they will approve the the restriping, but and and we maintain them like, it says it on the roadway transfer agreement anyway, but that's a new policy that they have, number one. Number two, we already have the proposal for all the landscaping on Southwest Seventy Ninth Court, if I'm I'm not mistaken. That's going to come before the council as well, because there's going to be more than twenty five thousand dollars with the landscaping. The windscreen is already, has already arrived. I think this should be, you know, putting that up in the next, you know, within the next week. So so again, I put that there as a as a safeguard, but if if everything works out right, we, part of the condition of receiving the permit from Miami Dade County is having that interlocal agreement signed. So this all could probably be done this fiscal year, but I just want to give you some wiggle room there, i- if it can't be done this year. The restriping is very easy. We, in fact, at the six o'clock meeting, you're going to have a miscellaneous services agreement that includes striping services. I'll have to go and bid that out. I could just have that from my, call it, the my push button contract. So I put that there as a placeholder, but my goal is to have it done this fiscal year.
Okay, so we are seeing some movement, right? So like the windscreen's here, that can go up, some landscaping, so we're we're, we are going to see some movement. We're just being held up by this interlocal agreement that caught us up.
Correct. The permit is approved, but part of the condition of the permit being approved was the interlocal agreement for that. And again, you know, kudos to our to parks, public work staff, because they wanted, the county wanted to do a full blown study. And we and we were able to show the study that we did when we did the traffic comming studying throughout the town that we studied over a hundred and twenty intersections. traffic comming studying throughout the town that we studied over 120 intersections and we were able to use that data. So it is moving forward, but the great point, thank you, because that was one of my emails I had to return to residents.
Any other questions? All right, yeah.
I, I think, I think another item that we've been working on and I'm sure, you know, Councilman Dunky is going to probably talk about it, I'm sure, is, is something that's been a topic at the EAC, right? That we've been kind of preparing ourselves as well. It's kind of maybe bringing back, they call it the inter-local agreement, ILA, about possibly instead of, remember how we used to have Cambridge? Now we're going to talk about having it for the Coast Academy, where we'll have it for the coast, the middle school and the high school. I know it's been some conversation at the EAC, but I could tell you, council member, that we've been talking to Superintendent Villalobos and he attends those meetings and his staff attendants. So we're, that's still on the radar. And, and I'll report back to the council as soon as we, we get some more information from, from the superintendent's office.
Councilman, did you want to bring that forward, add any more information on that at this time or were you going to do it later?
Once we have more information, then we have more to bring, not tonight, okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? No?
No, no, Mayor, I think, I think the biggest message we wanted to make sure is that we're going to be maintaining the, the military at the same level. We have a
That's for our plan.
Yes, a, a, as for our plan. And we have a healthy reserve. We know we're going to be using some money from the reserve, but also, Mayor, we have not ignored the fact when you talked about bringing up a resolution to talk about addressing the fund reserve and increasing our mandated 17% in our kitty to make that higher. And then whatever that delta is to look at for any type of fund reserve for property acquisition and/or remediation. So I know you mentioned that a couple of months ago and it's still on my list. It's on my list, you know?
I think we need to accelerate that. And again, the idea is if we have the good years, that let's go ahead and reinvest it in the town. We know we're faced with a number of unexpected expenses, both at Legacy Park and at Blue Heron Park. Substantial numbers. Then just for an update on the council, I did meet with Ralph and our environmental attorney and Mitch and Chad to talk about what our options were. And in a nutshell, they said it's a tough road to hoe for us to try to not do the mitigation necessary or even go to the standards that are set by the state, which is at 5.5 parts per million compared to what the county does, which is 2.2 parts per million. We're the only county that does that. So we, there's a number of things we can do. We're still discussing our strategy, whether we appeal to the county or what other methods we may take. So we're still in the middle of that, still trying to find ways to both keep our residents safe, but also be frugal with those dollars. You know, if we don't have to move dirt because it's not going to make a difference, then we should, is the bottom line. So we're still working on that and we're, again, that's a substantial expense for the town this year and next year as well. So I just want to throw that out there, there. All right, anything else?
And I think, Mayor, even longer term picture for us is going to be, you know, we already know we've committed for the Legacy Park and municipal complex, right? We already know that we kind of drew that land sign, it's 49.9 million. We are continuing and you'll see the report later with Emma. We're continually grinding with the, with the design team as well as Kaufman Lynn. And I think once we get that before the council and we have what's called the GMP number two, right? GMP number two, which is the, the construction of it. GMP number one was the remediation of the soil, so we know it's going to be 12.8. But with the, when we get the GMP number two in front of the council, we'll have a clear path picture of what to do with that reserves. Because there's been a lot of comments, hey, you know, there's a lot of money in the reserves. Maybe you could get to some more aggressive investments or what have you. I haven't, didn't, I want to do anything there because we know we have this, this, right around the horizon, we have this. So we want to make sure that, and that's why, Mayor, your plan is going to come into propose ordinance who we're working on in terms of that where we, we want to make sure we have a secure funding mechanism there. And then once that is done, we could take a breath and say, okay, we're at that 49.9 million dollars. We know where the funding is going to come from here and we go from there. Because there's a lot of moving parts. The Eel property, for example, that we, that I just discussed here, that could be a deal that we've said in public. It could be if it works out great for the town, if we're on the A list, we'll probably end up getting a million dollars an acre. Right now, we're on the B list. And also the county has committed to reappraise that property as well. So that's actually going on as well. So, you know, thank you, Commissioner Cohen Higgins, for helping with that process as well. So, so some moving parts are coming up.
All right, anything else? No? All right. This workshop is now adjourned and we'll see you all in about 33 minutes for our other town council meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Town Council meeting. Mr. Clerk, if you could please take the role.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Lord?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Here.
Mayor Mairbott?
President.
You have a quorum. You'd all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Marisa, if you could please read the instructions for anybody who'd like to call in.
Please be advised that when joining the meeting, you are automatically muted. Welcome to tonight's meeting. The public was able to make public comments prior to the meeting either by leaving a voicemail message or sending an email to the town clerk. We did not receive any voicemails or email public comments for this evening's meeting. If you wish to speak tonight, please press star nine and the host will be alerted. Pressing star nine is known as raising your hand. Once you press star nine, you will be placed in a queue to speak and will be called upon by your name or the last three digits of your telephone number. Please wait to be called upon. Please state your name and address. If you are a hired consultant or town employee, or if you are engaged in lobbying activities and/or representing an organization, please provide that information before speaking. Please be sure to be in a quiet area to avoid any unnecessary noise. A time limit of three minutes will be imposed for each speaker during public comments.
All right. Thank you very much. Before we get started, I'm saddened to share some information that on May 23rd, the town of Cutler Bay lost one of our staff family members, Anthony R.C. I don't know how to pronounce his last name. I apologize. That was a park service aide who was tragically killed in a motorcycle accident. He was just 22 years old, but he was a valuable member of our team. After graduating from Cutler Bay Senior High, Anthony worked at Event Factor as a photo booth attendant. He was just 22 years old, but he was a valuable member of our team. After graduating from Cutler Bay Senior High, Anthony worked at Event Factor as a photo booth attendant while attending FIU. But he always made it his mission to volunteer and be a part of the community he loved. He gave much of his time to the East Ridge community, assisting the residents by walking their dogs and delivering their packages. He also participated in several million meal packaged food drives, helping our neighbors across South Florida to secure their next meal. I'm asking that you please keep Anthony's family in your prayers during what I'm sure is a very, very difficult time for them, as well as a loss for our Parks and Rec team, who will need their support as well through this time. So if you could all please join me for a moment of silence and his memory and honor. Thank you. Oh my God, you were this family. All right. All right. At this time, I'm going to open it up for public comments. I'm sure we're going to have a couple of people talking about the land that's available to our north and with Palmetto Bay and a number of people have reached out to us to ask us to intervene on that. And nothing is more important to Cutler Bay, obviously, than the environment. We were, we've been talking about what we can do to affect any change or any positive outcome in that area. And we're still working on that. We do have to trust our neighbors to the North Palmetto Bay, this initial level of doing what we think would be the best thing is preserving the land. And I think they will. That's my general impression of it. But I'm sure some folks want to comment on that. So I'm going to open it up for public comments now. If anybody would like to speak, the public comments is now open. If there's anybody else wishing to speak before, I ask you to stand up now and please get in line before you address the podium and give us your name and your address, please.
For six years, I've been reporting an ongoing issue. My neighbor's stormwater is draining illegally onto my property, resulting in over a foot of standing water against the foundation of my home, and nothing meaningful has been done to finally stop it. I recently submitted video evidence clearly showing this violation. In response, my council members stayed silent, but I received another lengthy email from the town manager discussing topography and future drainage improvements, none of which addressed the current code violation that's causing damage to my home right now. Since the town manager wants to focus on topography, let me be clear about something. The town manager claims the neighbors are compliant based on topographic survey, but when I met with the building official to review that same survey, he admitted the topography shows the property is not retaining its water. Which one is it? This is almost identical to what happened in 2020, when we were told in an email by the town manager that a berm existed to stop the flow of water, only to later admit that it didn't, it didn't exist, once we all met to show in person. The Cutler Bay code clearly prohibits stormwater from flowing onto adjacent properties, rows, easements, et cetera. It does not make exceptions based on elevation, or street design, or if construction is being done. If this code is not enforced after seeing video proof, then what's the point of having it? Rather than first address the source of the flooding and require code compliance from the adjacent property, Cutler Bay's solution is to install a drain that will cost $350,000. How is that good management of the grants you receive and the taxes we pay, when the first step should be making the property compliant with the code, which doesn't cause Cutler Bay a thing? I am asking for action, not more emails or deflection. I truly do believe that each one of you there are help, are there to help our community. But why the silence on this issue when the solution and the problem is so clear? I respectfully request a meeting with the building official and at least one of my elected representatives to show me what evidence you are relying on to support Cutler Bay's position of inaction on this code violation. When the building official clearly told me that the code is being violated. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody in the queue?
No one in the queue.
Public comments is now closed. Takes us to. Board of committee reports, they've all been submitted by the council. Any additions? No? All right. That takes us to our town manager's report. Ralph, sir?
Thank you, my members of council. Tonight, we have the honor and privilege to have our Miami-Dade County Fire Rescue Chief, Chief Jadala, here present with his staff to provide our 2024 annual report. So Chief, please, welcome.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to our city manager, to our appointed leaders, and of course, our valuable residents of the town of Cutler Bay. My name is Ray Jadala, Fire Chief of Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. I'm here to present the 2024 annual service delivery report for the town of Cutler Bay. This is just a small snippet of the very detailed report that was submitted to the town a few months ago. I know that there was a approximately a 20-page, 15 to 20-page annual report that was submitted, and that report, that detailed report was made by my valuable team that's behind me. So today, we're going to go over just a couple of items from the 2024 report. And at the end, you know, if there's any questions, we could definitely have a discussion. So with that, I'm going to open it up with a video. It's approximately two minutes long. It highlights, you know, the services that were done for the town of Cutler Bay, and not just emergency calls, but also community engagement. So with that, I do hope there's some volume. Perfect. Thank you. All right, great.
A little bit here, wow.
Yes, we've got a very talented media relations team. So as you saw in the video, that actually depicted the town of Cutler Bay, everything from our community engagement to the calls themselves. And again, it's just a snippet of the almost 5,700 calls that were ran in the town of Cutler Bay. So with that, again, I stand here before you, proud to be the Fire Chief of Miami-Dade Fire Rescue and being your Fire Chief. And just a little overview on Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, we've been serving the town of Cutler Bay since 2005. And, you know, as, you know, we celebrate Miami-Dade Fire Rescue's 90th anniversary since we began in 1935 as a single company patrol unit that was putting out brush fires. And today, we stand as the sixth largest fire department in the country, 72 firehouses across Miami-Dade County, two of which are in Cutler Bay, but we are served by so many more that are in the surrounding areas. 167 frontline units, and of those four units are operating out of the two stations. But again, we do have stations that surround the town of Cutler Bay that provide services from technical rescue to hazmat, from fire suppression to medical rescues. There's, there's over 3,000 MDFR employees between our firefighters and our professional staff. And in Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, every day, we are staffed with over 500 firefighters throughout Miami-Dade County. To be exact, I believe it's 527 firefighters every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Miami-Dade Fire Rescue responded to just under 300,000 calls last year. Of those, as you could see here, 5,690 calls were in the town of Cutler Bay. And, you know, we are a ISO accredited one agency, and we are fully accredited agency. Now, there's over 30,000 fire departments across the country. And to actually achieve the ISO and the accreditation, only one, only 190 departments, plus the 30,000 departments across the United States actually have achieved that. And what does that mean? It means that we have the appropriate policies in place. We're reviewing the policies. The equipment is in place. Our tactics are either meeting or exceeding industry standard. So this, you know, just shows you that Miami-Dade Fire Rescue continues to move in a, in a forward position. So the resources in Cutler Bay, as you could see on the map, though, we have two stations that actually sit within the boundaries of Cutler Bay. There's actually eight stations that service Cutler Bay. And these stations, as a result of the, depending on the magnitude of the structure, could be a warehouse, could be an apartment building. So when a fire does occur, it's not just one or two fire trucks that respond, as we may see on Chicago Fire and then LA Fire TV shows. There's a complement of fire trucks that have to respond. And typical for a house fire, you're going to get five fire rescue units and, you know, two commanding officers. An apartment fire, you're going to get somewhere in the ballpark of 12 responding fire rescue units, and so forth and so on. As you see here, eight stations are within three miles of the town of Cutler Bay, 18 frontline units of those, you know, various rescue suppressions and commanding supervisors, battalion chiefs. And we have 59 firefighters on duty every day, and those firefighters are cross-trained as firefighter EMTs and paramedics. Last year, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue's response time to Cutler Bay's calls are seven minutes and 11 seconds. Our structure fires in the ballpark of six minutes and 35 seconds. I'm sorry. Approximately six minutes and 35 seconds. This is well below the county, the fire department, I'm sorry, the county's response times. The county average is seven minutes and 56 seconds. As you can see here, we're at seven minutes and 11 seconds. Just in regards to building a safe and resilient Cutler Bay. So Miami-Dade Fire is part of the community as we are growing with you. And as you could see here, the call volume continues to increase across the Cutler Bay and throughout Miami-Dade County. Typically, throughout Miami-Dade County, we see an increase of 2% to 3% in call volume. As, you know, growth continues and communities pop up throughout Miami-Dade County, so does the need for service. Since 2019, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue has opened up an additional fire station and put four new units to service or enhance, you know, delivery to Cutler Bay and the surrounding areas. This includes hazmat unit. This includes a technical rescue unit, you know, in the south end out of Station 70. And of course, we do have, even though it's not this current annual service report, you'll see it in the next one, and we'll discuss it a little bit more in detail. We actually placed a BLS response unit out of the Station 70, which provides a faster mechanism to get a patient cleared from an incident, so we could get a fire truck back in service quicker. But we'll talk about that in the next service delivery report, because it was just implemented this current fiscal year. You know, and again, our response times remain, you know, under the industry standards throughout, you know, the country. So building a safe and resilient Cutler Bay, you know, the ongoing construction throughout Cutler Bay in the next five, next five years, as many of you are aware, you know, the next five years, what we've seen, at least coming to Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. So we may not necessarily see single-family homes, because we don't necessarily inspect single-family homes. But as you can see here, residential units, we're popping up over 7,000 units. 723,000 square feet of commercial and retail square feet throughout Cutler Bay. And I know that there's some plans with the Southland Mall that, you know, we haven't even seen yet, you know, and we expect it to be Metropolis. You know, MDFR has inspected 769 businesses last year, and we have a fire station that is planned off of 184th Street and 157th Avenue. Again, it's to, you know, provide additional services that could come into Cutler Bay in the need, or in the, the requirements of the additional resources, depending on the complexity of the incident. And as we talked earlier, you know, I know that, you know, Station 74 is planned, you know, as part of our five and 10-year plan on the outskirts, and you may not necessarily see it on the map there, but actually, it was the map before that. Sorry. Actually, may not be able to see it on the map. That yellow one right there on the top there, that is a planned Station 74. It is part of our, you know, long-term, five- and 10-year plan. What we're planning to put a fire station there. We did just clear the land, and, you know, we're hoping with, depending on the fiscal budget over the next couple of years, the plan is to put a fire station there. So engaging with our Cutler Bay residents, in 2024, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue taught 38 health emergency life safety program courses. This is a course that's approximately two to three hours that teaches hands-on CPR, stop the bleed, stroke awareness. And we've actually received positive feedback from our community, from our residents, that they have actually implemented or had to utilize that training, you know, through either on a family member, at a friend. And we've even seen on the news where, you know, individuals have praised the course that they had to utilize. In addition to that, 38 community events totaling 4,408 residents just in the town of Cutler Bay, who received life-saving education, could be from our elderly patient, our elderly resident, to our children in school. And of course, Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, you know, you know, accepts feedback, and we're always looking to improve our services. As you can see here, 20, you know, every time we do, not every time, I'm sorry, we do submit surveys to residents that we actually respond to EMS calls. Of that, 28 Cutler Bay residents, you know, who received their medical care from Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, rated our service at 4.96 out of a 5.0, basically giving a 99% satisfaction rate. And what you see here in regards to the italics, these are actual comments from the residents of the town of Cutler Bay that touted the services that they, they received. And I'm not going to go through them all, you know, but the first one, the crew was very kind and professional. Excellent job. Thank you. And with that, I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, thank you for the opportunity to stand here before you to present 2024 annual service report. And I open up the floor for any questions.
All right. We do appreciate the great job that you guys do in Cutler Bay.
Thank you.
I don't know if we have any questions, but we appreciate when you come and give us an update. I'm really excited. Yeah, the continuous improvements, both the new stations coming online and the new technology and equipment that you're using. So.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your openness and communication. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Chief, too. As you can see, Mayor Members of Council, when you go to our special events now, they have what we call the little fire watch truck. You know, our events have gotten so large and several thousand that we want to make sure we create a safe environment. Again, thank you, Chief, and your staff.
Absolutely.
It became an attraction, and most people want to go inside the little vehicle and look at it. And it was, it was a great, great suggestion there for fire watch.
You know, who doesn't love a fire truck or a rescue truck, right? You know, especially a green one. So, but thank you.
Only for visiting it, right? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Members of Council, next we have our monthly report from Emma Jones from Stand Tech regarding an update on design services for 16-acre Legacy Park in municipal complex. This should be online.
Good evening. Emma Jones with Stand Tech, owner's rep for Cutler Bay. The town, the, the Legacy Park is moving along really well. It's really exciting. Hopefully, you guys are seeing the difference as you're, you're driving around and driving by. So to date, the soil export numbers are 62,392 tons, which equates to 2,836 truckloads. So we're about 63% complete with the export of the soils. Um, so we're about sixty-three percent complete with the export of the soils. Uh, soil import is eighty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-six tons, so four thousand ninety-five truckloads. And that is approximately forty-six percent complete. So um, I'm sure you've seen the trucks um out and about and around town, um, and, you know, everything's moving forward. It's really exciting to see the differences uh week by week of um the sites, um, of the sites, sorry. The um, I've attached some photographs here just showing sort of the differences um week over week. Obviously, we had a, some good rain um at the beginning of May, so, and a little bit more in June. So we had some, some filled areas, shall we say, but on the whole, you can see the progression of the um the digging and export um of the soils. And again, our timeline, um, we are due to be completed with um all of this um soil remediation and site prep by the end of this year, beginning of uh next year. The design is ongoing and um the um, and once the design is complete, then we will um give you an update on the Phase Two estimate and um and GMP. But all and all, the, the project's moving along really well. We've been very lucky with the weather to date, so um we are actually ahead of schedule on the soil remediation and site prep. And um, you know, it's exciting to, to see everything moving forward, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, exciting to see, uh, move along pretty quickly, thank you very much.
Thank you, Emma. Um, next, Mayor, Members of Council, we have an update from uh Franger Road, Road Improvement Project. Uh, we have tonight, uh Tag Team, we have Angel Torpen, uh virtually in Places de Fano uh from Kimley Horn. And then, uh, as usual, we'll have Janet Ogato here uh regarding the public involvement meeting. So uh, if we can, get Angel.
Hi, good evening, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council members. This is our June twenty twenty-five update for the Franger Road Improvement Project. Let me go ahead and share, I apologize. Um. All righty, can you all see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
Awesome, thank you. Um, so this is our update for the Franger Road Improvement Project, as previously stated. Um, Janet's gonna provide us with a public information update shortly, but first I will talk about our construction activities. So we continue to hold our bi-weekly construction progress meetings with the contractor, the town, the EOR, and ourselves as the CEI. Um, as for the work zones, uh, Work Zone One has been completed and is open to the public. Um, and that runs along Franger Road from Southwest one eighty-fourth Street to Sterling Drive. Um, actually, recently, Work Zone Two was also open to the public. Um, the removal of the palm trees between Gulfstream Road and Tiffany Drive has been completed. The only outstanding item there is to get the roots um removed on the trees, but that should not impact normal operations um within Work Zone Two. And Acosta continues to do work in Work Zone Three. And they have provided the revised MOT plan for that work area from Tiffany Road to Caribbean Boulevard um to the residents within the area, and flyers were distributed. So we're making sure we're keeping people up to date with um what's going on in Work Zone Three. Um, in addition to that, Kimley Horn, the town, and ATI um continue to monitor the work to ensure that proper MOT remains in place throughout the duration of the project. And they are also doing drainage work um at the intersection of Franger Road and Southwest one ninety-third Drive um currently. So that's the most recent um project update for that. And at all times, our goal is to focus on keeping the site clean and safe um for all residents and many maintaining the MOT uh properly. Um, and now I can turn it over to Janet to provide us with the public information update.
Good day. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, happy to be with you here today. Um, so brief update on my ongoing public involvement with the residents affected by this project. So basically, right now, although I'm available for everyone, I'm focusing on Phase Three. Um, distributing door-to-door um the MOT um pattern, the new pattern, not only on Franger Road, but also all the lateral streets that are impacted as well. Um, so far, very positive feedback. Um, haven't heard any complaints, really. Um, and that's about it, any questions? No? Um, looking forward to seeing you on July fourth for the big um celebration. Take care and thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Um, and then lastly, I just have a quick update on the project schedule. So the current project duration is from July twenty twenty-four to September twenty twenty-six. And a time extension was recently granted for the project due to accommodating um unknown existing utility conflicts as well as um inclement weather conditions. So at this time, ATI has declared three official rain days um where they had to suspend construction operations due to unsuitable working conditions. Um, and I think that about updates our construction are, that wraps up our construction updates for Franger Road at this time, unless there are any questions I can help address.
We have none at this time, thank you for your update.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Janet, Jane, thank you, Angel. Uh, next, Mayor, Members of Council, um, I wanna put, put something on the agenda here. Again, it's not gonna be a monthly update, but it's very important. We first spoke about it during our, our budget visiting session that we, that took place today at five o'clock. Uh, today, I wanna uh introduce to Adrian Esquell from Tech Perk. If you come up, Adrian, as he's walking up, and he's gonna provide us an update on the, on the town's integrated enterprise software solution project. Kind of like, you know, services are always our owner's rep, working close with the, with the different departments and, and really being our owner's rep between us and, and Tyler. So with that, Adrian, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and uh Council members in uh Cutler Bay. Uh, I'm Adrian Esquell, uh, I'm with Tech Perk, uh, serving as the town's principal consultant on the Tyler ERP implementation project for the town. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to provide this uh, this uh brief update on the progress that we've made so far. So as you know, the project uh replaces the a, the aging Eden system uh with a single modern cloud-based platform from Tyler Technologies. Uh, this new system allows residents uh to submit permits, pay bills, request services, and view their account information entirely online, uh dramatically reducing in-person, in-person visits to the town. Uh, VRP covers uh financials, permitting and licensing, asset management, uh parks and recreation, all in one solution. Uh, it's funded through the uh American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, uh and is scheduled uh for completion uh by December twenty twenty-six. Okay. Uh, since the kickoff uh this spring, we've completed several foundational tasks. Uh, we convened the project team uh and finalized the project charter, scope, and schedule. We established the project governance framework, confirming roles and responsibilities across departments. Uh, we completed the initiating plan phase for financials and conducted key stakeholder workshops and finance with finance staff. And we started the high-level assessment and solution design for the finance module. Uh, I wanna specifically thank uh Robert Dario and Mildred Belloran for their time and dedication throughout those working sessions. Uh, their engagement is uh very important uh for shaping the system uh for the, to meet the uh town's future needs. So upcoming activities uh include continuing workshops with finance and beginning planning uh for Phase Two, uh which is permitting and licensing, which kicks off in July. So the uh, the project is being executed in four phases. Uh, Phase One is uh financials, uh began, it began in April, it's currently in progress, and it's scheduled to go live next July, July twenty twenty-six. Phase Two is enterprise permit and licensing, uh begins next month, and the target go-live uh is uh next summer, uh same date in July. Phase Three and Phase Four, uh which is asset management and parks and rec, uh that'll start in September and run through uh March of next year. Uh, the ER, the ERP project is uh guided, guided by governance structure led by uh project sponsors. Uh, the town manager, Rafael Casals, and administrative services director, Vivian Minaj, who provide oversight and strategic direction. Tech Perk serves as a project manager coordinating efforts across all departments. And each functional area has a designated uh module lead uh that ensures that the department-specific needs uh are addressed and aligned uh throughout the implementation. So uh on the screen, you'll see a, a project timeline visual. Uh, you'll see that those phases I mentioned, those four phases, uh follows a structured sequence that starts with planning, uh followed by design, testing, uh and go-live and closeout. Uh, as you can see in the timeline, uh each phase has specific stages uh outlined in Tyler's implementation plan. Uh, this approach helps uh ensure quality and, and accountability and keep transition uh at every step through the phases. Uh, as I mentioned, we're currently in Phase One for financials. Phases for permitting and licensing, asset management, and parks and rec uh begin or sequentially start, start uh starting in July and September of this year, with their go-live dates uh staggered throughout uh twenty twenty-six. Uh, the project completion, as I mentioned, uh is scheduled for next December to meet the ARPA funding deadline. Uh, so in closing, uh the project officially launched uh at the end of April. Um, as we move into future phases, as uh Mr. Casals mentioned, I will continue to update the council uh and keep engaged through implementation. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to serve as the uh principal consultant for this project, and happy to take any questions.
Any questions in the council? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just real, real quickly, um, on the permitting process, right? So uh I pull permits across Florida, many different municipalities, and in some cases, uh some other states. And Tyler is a, you know, they, they use that online permitting system, all right? Which is very, very efficient, I mean, as a contractor, I mean, spot on, right? So I guess my question is, since these platforms already exist in many, many other municipalities, i- is it really, does it really take that long to implement the exact same thing here within, in, in Cutler Bay? I mean, of course, I don't have a vast understanding of, of, you know, software development, but it seemed to me if, if this has already been developed for a lot of other municipalities, wouldn't be a lot easier just to take that and plug it in and change some names and off we go. And I, the reason I ask is just because we, we are so archaic in our permitting process here.
Yeah, so the uh, the uh, let me bring that. The time, the, the stages that the uh, the vendor uh has set up is very structured, you know? So they go through workshops is kind of one of their key activities. And so they engage with community development, understanding the processes and the workflows, um and showing them how the new system works. Um, and it's a, it's, it's, it's very involved, um so that they understand how the system is configured. It's, it's, you're going from a, a much older system to a newer one that has a lot of capabilities. So they wanna, you know, their process is set up in such a way to, to really, you know, um, really extract those processes and those workflows and, and recreate them in the new system. So they have, you know, they have their, their process that they have, and uh that's how it's, that's how it's set up. They have uh, they have it's, you know, scheduled over, over a year. And that's, you know, that's how these projects are, they typically go, they have these, this pro, they prolong, but this, this timeline that is very involved in understanding the processes and understanding, you know, how the town works, and then being able to recreate that in their system, and then go through training, and then ultimately to be able to deploy it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And, and Vice Mayor, if I could add, I think you, you're absolutely right, because one of the things that we did when we selected through the process, compared to process selecting Tyler, was that very same issue that they have used widely throughout the industry. And, and yes, we would love it if it would be just quickest to do a plug-and-play, but you gotta do the backend side, right? For example, right now, you can't pay your, your permit online, right? So we wanna make sure that we have that, that's probably why the finance modules first, and the second module's uh the community development department. And believe me, our, our town staff, uh, wanted to be efficient, right? Because they have to hear those type of comments, you're one of the only cities that we have to come in and, you know, have to pull a permit. So we, but they are very excited to, to go through that next phase, but the foundation is the finance portion, that's what we're in. But, but, but believe me, we're really excited about that, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Adrian, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I know we've had lengthy uh reports here, but uh next, briefly, we have our, our good friend, Cheryl Moscow from Miami-Dade County Transit Department to report uh two years. So we're getting efficiency here, right? You know, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, and twenty-four. Um, municipal circular uh bus, as you know, but we have an interlocal agreement with Miami-Dade County Transit. For people call it a trolley, it's just shrink-wrapped like a trolley, but it's a, a transit bus. And, and Cheryl, man, you're one of the originals here, you remember, remember cutting the cake in, in September twenty-twelve, right?
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, thank you for having me. Yes, I was going to say, your, your circulator service started September twenty-twelve, so we're coming up on thirteen years of service. And in that time, ridership has slowly grown. Over the last two years, every quarter, it's went up at least five hundred riders per month. And more towards tw- end of twenty-three and twenty-four, it's almost been a thousand riders a month. So it has become a good service. Um, what I can say is, we have the three-one-one call center where people can call in if they have complaints or anything. Uh, the twenty twenty-three, we had fourteen calls into three-one-one, and three of them were recommendations. So that's doing pretty good. In twenty twenty-four, we only had six calls. Unfortunately, they were all complaints, a couple of them were just no-show, and that's common. And then a few of the others were um operators that weren't quite polite to our senior citizens, and we have a hard time with that. But recently, I saw that our operator who has run it during the workday is a long time. I'm not sure if he's still in Cutler Bay, he used to be when I lived down this way. But he is loved by the senior citizens because he knows them all, he talks to them, he spends time, he helps them. So they're really liking the service. Um, I'll get a little head because this isn't the twenty twenty-five, but we have the Transitway BRT that will be opening here. As if you've probably seen, you have three stations. We're working well, trying to keep the circulator bus, giving it authority to be on the Transitway so that passengers could still connect without having to cross the street. Because the new system is calling for everything but the BRT buses to be on there. So we're trying real hard, and I think we've been given over the cake, I'll know soon enough. Hopefully, this system is supposed to start September uh twenty-ninth is what I'm hearing right now, but that's been a sliding date, so I don't know. And the last important thing that's really not on, it will be in this next coming report that ends, is um the mini buses that were wrapped to look like trolleys have, have made their youthful life of either twelve years or five hundred thousand miles. The ones that were wrapped, unfortunately, you're not seeing them anymore because both of their engines have gone. One of them was already replaced about seven years ago. And when the, when it went again, and the next one went, they made the choice to retire these buses, because it isn't worth the cost of putting in a new engine. So right now, you're just seeing any of our forty-foot buses. Once in a while, you get the other, what we call the minibus, but even that one's getting close. It's at its end of life, but it's still, they're still patching it together a little bit. So I'm in the process of working to identify um a forty-foot CNG bus and work with our staff to get that bus wrapped. But it's taking a little bit, we're a big agency, and I'm trying to get them to identify a bus that's one of the better CNG buses, hasn't had a lot of mechanical problems, and one that doesn't have advertising on it, because we can't just take advertising off one that's already been paid for. So that's the main thing right now, and you'll be seeing me again real soon for the next report. Any questions?
I don't know of any questions, but thank you very much, that circulator is very, very valuable, uh especially for our elderly residents.
And that's what I tell them, every time people bring it up higher up, that just look at numbers and productivity and things like that. And then they say, oh, it's not a real productive ride. I said, you have to understand, this is to help seniors not only get around, it's their socialization time. So we have learned that there's people that just get on it and ride because they know everyone else and they talk to people. So I'm, I'm a big advocate for it, because I know how important it is for seniors who, especially if they live alone, to get out and see people. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Cheryl. And Mayor, Members of Council, I know we're in, uh, embarking into our budget season, I wanted to be, uh, make sure that residents understand that, that the funding for this uh circular service is from the, the gas tax. You know, we receive approximately two point eight million dollars based on our population from, from the gas tax proceeds, the half penny gas tax. Eighty percent of that funding goes to road 80% of that funding goes to roadway capital improvement projects, and the 20% go, are allocated for transit-related items. This, the on-demand as well. So again, it's something that is through a gas tax services. Mayor, I just have a couple more minutes. Thank you, Mayor, and Councilman Lord Ramirez for attending the Chamber South luncheon with me. As you saw, we, one of the guest speakers was, I still call him Mayor Regalado, but Tomas, Tomas Regalados, you know, the property appraiser. And since that meeting, we worked closely with their staff to the point that we have scheduled, and you'll see the notices coming out here pretty soon, Tuesday, July the 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in this very room, where we're going to have the property appraiser and at least 20 to 30 of his staff members to help individuals discuss homestead exemption, portability, senior exemption, and, and Mayor and Council, as, as Mayor Regalado mentioned there, several folks that don't even know they have, they're eligible for exemptions. So if you don't think you're getting a lot of, a lot of folks in veterans exemptions, you know, widow exemptions, a lot of folks aren't getting those exemptions. So he's going to have his staff here, trilingual. So again, the date's going to be Tuesday, July the 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00, and we'll work closely with the communications department and, and push that out. Another item that we are just allowing the, the county and the terror group, as you know, the Southside Community Center there, Government Center is going through redevelopment phase, as, as we all know, there's going to be some housing there that's going to be done by the terror group, and part of the conditions with the county's agreement is to have, host a town hall meeting. So we've allowed them to use our town hall or the town hall meeting, and then they'll have another one onsite at the library location. The date that we have agreed upon is going to be Tuesday, July the 8th at 6:30. So again, Tuesday, July the 8th to 6:30, there'll be public notices there. Again, it's not our meeting, we're just letting them use, you know, our venue there. On this past, in, in May, we had a, what's called a cycle visit for our community rating system. We have to go through so many years, every, a cycle visit, and I wanted to congratulate our public work staff. We maintain our Class 3 rating. In fact, I don't know how we did it, but we actually improved by 28 points. So we continue to have, offer our residents who have, or in the special flood zone, 35% discount. Again, the numbers that I'm going to be writing you is, an average policy discount within the town of Cutler Bay is $523. Overall impact is approximately $3 million savings throughout the town. And, and just to, just to provide some, some background, the only, the, we're in the three Class 3 club that offer residents 35%. The only other folks that are in that club are Miami County, just recently entered into that club, Monroe County, and Ocala. The gold standard is Pinellas County, who is a Class 2. So again, kudos to, you know, Alfredo Gineer and our consultants for offering that. And lastly, something that we're going to be addressing on August the 11th through the 31st, August 11th through the 31st, we're going to be closing our pool because we've identified some leaks that, that are, you know, underneath the pool deck. And you'll see me bringing an agenda item forward for the council of bringing in the contractor. We've been able to coordinate with the same contractor Miami County Parks Department uses. And in fact, if this contractor, I think there's a couple of actual pools that were built back in the 50s or exactly like ours throughout the county. So they are, we're aware of where the pipes are, et cetera, et cetera, they identified the leaks. So we are, we're working with that, with that vendor. Again, the pool closure dates will be August 11th through the 31st, so that's something that we're going to be bringing forward to the council. And lastly, as I report to the council, we, some of our projects, we worked really hard with our state lobbyists to, to work on appropriations. As you all know, we went up to Tallahassee, our town attorney, Mitch Beerman, went as well. And I could, glad to report that at least we're on the budget, right? Before the governor's red pen veto pen, as we call it, right? We have $50,000 towards our active adults program. We have $300,000 towards the, the demolition and refurbishment of Bell Air Park. As you know, that's an unsafe structure that we have. We have $100,000 for a US1 Economic Development Plan. And lastly, something we've been talking about as well, is we have a $550,000 appropriation to help with the EOC Town Hall Municipal Complex as well. So that, so if you tally that up, that's about $1 million worth of, worth of funding that we have there. And I want to, you know, personally thank Senator Collatute and Representative Omar Blanco and our lobbying team as well. And, and I'm going to call up Laura Reynolds briefly, just for about a couple of minutes to talk about the environmental aspects of some of the appropriations as well that we've been fighting to as well, that may not be directly to the town of Cutler Bay, but for the region as well. So Laura?
I just have a handout to make it shorter.
Thank you. So not only are we focusing on just our direct appropriation, we're also looking for the entire region as well, Mayor, Members of Council.
Excellent. So it, it happens to be your meeting is great timing because, of course, they've just reached their, their final budget. And so the first page is outlining the highlights of conservation funding. We did get full Everglades funding, which isn't listed on here, but the Florida Forever Program is really interesting. Typically funded at $100 million annually, was only funded at 18 million, which is very disappointing. But what we saw instead were individual projects from around the state bypassing that normal process. Now, I don't think that's a good idea, but that seems to be the trend. And so my recommendation is that we put forward a specific ask for the 2.1 acres of the Spreader Canal on the 8.4 acre property that we're working on in the next session, which, by the way, committee weeks start in September. So that's some, that's a strategy that I think we should pursue in the next legislative session where we have a specific project that we're asking for land acquisition. A really disappointing part of this is the Seminole Gaming Compact, $400 million was supposed to go to conservation projects. That was clawed back, and they rescinded that. And Rural and Family Lands, they made up for that a little bit, 250 million for, to keep agriculture in productive agriculture, so that's a good thing. And what's next? This is going to be sent to the governor to sign, and the bills that are pending, still some that we're watching, he has 15 days to act upon. And then if you turn the page, you'll see specifics side by side. The only thing I wanted to point out again, Florida Forever, Biscayne Bay gets $20 million. Again, I think in the future, we should be asking for more. And unfortunately, the water quality grant program went, got zeroed out. So it got 135 million, and now it's, now it's zeroed out. That could change, I suppose, but for now, that's, that's where it is. State Parks Land Management, 21.5 million, which is much higher, which is great. Coral Reef Restoration, same as last year. Resiliency goes up a notch, which is really good for us, and beach projects also go up a notch. So that's, that's kind of the summary of the budget. I did want to say a couple other things. Biscayne Bay Restoration now has a recommended alternative, so we're going to be finalizing that. It should be completed in one year, so there's funding for that, it's moving again, good news. The bad news is, Bird Drive Basin and Pensucco are not in that recommended plan, Alternative 32. The other thing is, you'll see, coming up at the county level, 247 acres of wetlands on a potential destruction proposal. There's, there's a proposal to develop that land. Again, wetlands are super important for Biscayne Bay's water quality, so want to put it on your radar. We brought it up at the Coastal Mayor's meeting, and we have a pending letter for all municipalities to take a look at and sign. Again, wetlands shouldn't be what we're, what we're developing at this point, especially if you're looking at Biscayne Bay's future and our water quality needs and flooding. The other, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, no, that's everything on my list. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura, appreciate it.
Thank you, Laura, for attending all those meetings. I mean, we just, I can't even keep up with all the acronyms, so if you had a loan, you know, those meetings, so thank you. And I think it shows the Mayor, Members of Council that, that we're more of a leadership role there in terms of not just focusing on direct funding, regional funding as well. So, so thank you, Laura, for everything you did.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Mayor, Members of Council, that completes my report.
You sure? All right, thank you, Ralph. Laura takes us to the town attorney's report.
Unless Allison has something, I'm just going to echo what Ralph said.
Thank you, Allison, are you good too? All right, great. And that takes us to town clerk's report.
Does a friendly reminder for anybody who hasn't filed their Form 1, they need to be filed by July 1st. So if you have any problems trying to file, just let me know and I'll walk you through it.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to the consent agenda. If any polls, if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval. So moved. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Callahan, looking for a second.
A second.
Second by Councilman Lord. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Now I'm going to open up the floor for public comments again. Anybody wishing to speak, please come forward. Is there anybody in the queue?
No one in the queue.
Public comments now closed. Well, it takes us to item 10A, please.
An ordinance of the mayor and the town council of the town of Cutler Bay, Florida, establishing the candidate qualifying period for the 2026 municipal general election and establishing the runoff date if necessary, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Know if we need an explanation on this, if it, does anybody need an explanation on this item? Now any questions, looking for a motion?
Motion.
Post for approval by Councilman Ramirez, looking for a second.
A second.
Second by Councilman Lord. Roll call table, please.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lord?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Yes.
Mayor Mayor Bus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, brings us to item 11A.
A resolution of the mayor and the town council of the town of Cutler Bay, Florida, amending Resolution Number 17-30 relating to cost of living adjustments, COLA, directing the town manager to develop an employee merit pay and longevity pay policy, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Hey, Vice Mayor Callahan, this is your item. I'm going to go ahead and give you the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I certainly want to start by thanking the council for allowing me to work with town staff to revisit this resolution and to, and hopefully to provide some, some further clarity. Also want to thank Allison, Roger Poe, and Ralph for, there are many meetings with myself as, as we kind of work through this. One of the things, like I stated in, in the workshop, is that I've always been looking for, you know, for everything to be fair across the board. And one of my concerns early on was when we were setting budgets and having to deal with, with deficits, but really being handcuffed by this, by this resolution, right? Because there was zero flexibility in 1730. And I just felt it, you know, kind of frustrating when you're, when you're having to dig millions of dollars into your savings to balance a budget, and, and you, you as a council have, have no flexibility to be able to just adjust certain things. So in, with that being said, and also listening to your comments, right? And, and your feedback from, from the DAS, and taking that into consideration. So what the, the resolution before tonight modifies 730 with, with the following modifications. The first, the first thing is that the cost of living COLA will remain with, with the CPI table and the Miami Dade County, Broward County modifier. Just for clarification, prior to 1730 being passed, COLA was not set by anything except for the town manager at the time. So when 1730 was passed, it kind of set some specific structure of how COLA would be determined. And, you know, after consideration and talking with, with the town attorneys, we felt that that was best to keep it, you know, keep it with that, with that rate. Now, with, with that being said, what we wanted to do is to try to put some guardrails in place, right? That really kind of helped guide and give some more flexibility to the town council. So as long as the COLA each year that will be determined on October 1st for the previous year, as long as the COLA for the CPI with the modifier is between 2% and 5%, there is no discussion on the DAS, right? And the reason that we put that in there is because COLA, over the, over the lifespan of COLA, it was like about 3.5% average, right? So, you know, if it's 2% to 5%, there's, there doesn't need to be a discussion. If, if the CPI and the, the modifier are greater than 5%, then it would have to come before council to be approved, right? So, you know, let's say it was 7%, it automatically stops at 5%, but that gives the authority to the, to the town council to be able to increase it beyond 5% to match what the CPI is with the modifier, you know? But it can never be lower than 2%. So if COLA, if COLA with the modifier came in at 1.5, it would never be lower than 2%. The cost of living adjustments will be provided to the town, to the town staff and the town's annual compensation financial report for the preceding year that, okay, so, A, let me put it a little bit easier, right? If the town does not put at least $500,000 into its reserves based on the prior audited report, then COLA is not automatic, okay? So that, you know, that's a guardrail where if we have to dig into the savings, COLA does not become automatic, but it can be established by the town council, right? So as long as we're putting in $5,000, $500,000 or more, and COLA is with, and the CPI is with 2% and 5%, there's no discussion. If, if we put in less than $500,000, then the council otherwise has to approve what, what the COLA would be. Proposed increases to the COLA, town staff exceeding the 5% increase will have to require a town approval during the budgeting process. You know, that's if COLA doesn't meet, meet those two criterias, or if at any given time the town council wishes to grant a COLA higher than 5%, they always have that authority to do so. The next item really is putting in a, a benchmark, and when we, when we, when I consulted with Allison and Ralph and, and Roger, we looked at a starting point of $110,000. Now, this really, when, when you look at this, this is really meets some of the, the feedback and the criteria that was on the discussion in the workshop, right? And right now, and I, and I found this out, I didn't, I didn't know this before, but right now, well, I did know, but it didn't make, it didn't make sense, right? So right now, if any employee reaches their salary max, they're not eligible for COLA. So today, if you have an individual that's making $45,000 a year, and they're at the top of their pay scale, they are not eligible for COLA because the way that it's written right now, any employee that maxes out at the top of their pay scale is not eligible for COLA. No, they're not eligible for merit, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Eligible for merit, right? I'm sorry, they're not eligible for merit. What, what we're proposing is that we flip that, right? And anybody that, that, anybody making more than $110,000, right? And reaches the max of their pay scale will not be eligible for COLA, but will be eligible for merit. Anybody making less than $110,000, regardless of if they have reached their top of their pay scale, will continue to be eligible for COLA and merit until they reach that $110,000, right? So right now, an individual making less than $110,000 at the top of the pay scale only receives merit, does not receive COLA. So the people that benefit, in my opinion, the people that benefit the most from COLA are really those that are making less than $110,000, because that's what inflation really affects, right? Now, if you make, if you make more than $110,000 and you are still below the maximum of your pay scale, you're still eligible for, for both. It's only when you reach the max. Now, the, the reasoning for flipping COLA and merit is because right now, if you max out, you're getting, you get COLA automatically, right? And there's no merit. So this proposes the So this proposes to change that, and it still gives individuals who, um, have reached the top of their pay scale the ability to get up to 5% merit and it, it incentivizes them to continue to do a good job, right? As opposed to somebody just sitting back knowing that they're going, not, not that anybody on our staff does this. I'm not saying that at all. But what I am saying is that, you know, an individual, um, just automatically receives COLA, but now merit is an incentive for them to, to continue to, um, to do a great job and, and in, in production, you know, in, in the town's production. The other thing too is that, uh, COLA currently is, um, if I'm right, Allison, COLA is, is currently added to the base salary, right? This proposes also that COLA become a lump sum, right? And not add it to the base salary. Because COLA is for the cost of living for the previous year. If you keep adding it to the base salary, it, it, it kind of throws off, off that. And the other thing too is that on the percentage, you know, um, it's more beneficial for an individual to receive a lump sum than it is for them to receive that percentage over, o- over, uh, an entire, uh, pay period. Merit, on the other hand, will be, um, will, will be distributed to the, to the baseline salary. The other thing that we, we have done too, um, is that i- i- not me, I'm not taking credit for this, but this was part of the discussion, is that we're revising the way that, uh, that the, um, merit review is done, right? Right now, merit review is done basically on a satisfactory, unsatisfactory, uh, review scale. They, they're going to revise that so it's more of a point system, right? Which gives a, a much clearer picture, um, overall of a individual's performance. And based on that point scale, will we, will determine your percentage of merit, right? Now, this resolution, uh, sets merit at 5% of the payroll each year, but that can be in, that can be increased or decreased by the town council, right? So it's not an automatic. And again, you know, God forbid we ever got to a situation, and I hope that we never do, uh, where we have to dig into savings, 5% merit is not automatic. It, it can be decreased, um, or increased if the town is doing really, really, really well, right? I mean, if we, if one year we're putting $10 million into savings, then we have the ability to be able to increase merit and reward our, our, uh, employees for, for a job well done. The other thing that, um, that we've instituted here, which is a, a new thing in the merit, is a longevity step program. Which, um, I, and I do thank Councilmember, uh, Ramirez for bringing this up, and I wholeheartedly agree with this, that those individuals who have, uh, really contributed, you know, sometimes a career-long, uh, span with the town should, should be rewarded because it really says something for an individual who is willing to be able to stay with any organization for 10, 15, 20, 25 years. That's a, and especially in today's competitive world. And so I think that that's very important, that for employees that show that type of dedication to the town, that we should in return, show them our appreciation. And so this, this resolution includes a longevity step programming beginning at 10 years. And that a, um, that a 3% increase to their baseline salary be giving to an individual starting on their 10-year anniversary and for every five years thereafter. So, um, I'm not quite sure if, you know, I, if I was able to explain this, um, to everybody. It makes a lot of sense in my head. But, um, what, what we, what I really tried to do was, uh, bring COLA i- i- into merit, bring COLA and merit into a system that, that is very fair, that rewards our employees for, for doing a, a great job, but also provides the flexibility to the town council to be able to either increase or decrease uh, as financial situations, uh, occur. And that we're never sitting here again, you know, having to dig into the reserves to balance the budget and, and not have the ability to, to be, you know, either say yea or nay to, uh, COLA or merit increases. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I do appreciate a lot of the work you did as, again, you know, looking at what could be perceived as extremely high increases. This seems to be real, and I only have two things that I have questions with or, and one of them I have a reservation with. Number one, and, and common in the industry, um, there's, it's usually 2.5 to 3% merit increase across the board. And it's, it could be zero for some people, 6 or 7 for some people, there's no limit. So, you know, I would think that that would be more in line with what would be expected. You know, it's, the, the other in- incentives that you put in the COLA on top of that thing is something that you don't see in the rest of the, uh, you know, we'll call it the, the real world. Uh, we're, uh, out there, but 3% I think is much more so. Wondering why you chose a 5% instead of the 2.5 to 3%, that would be more interesting standard. The other thing is you set a limit of a minimum of 2%. So if COLA is 1 or 0, they're still gonna get above what the COLA would be. And just look at the explanation why you would think that would be something rather than just a 0 to 5.
Yeah, sure. Uh, I'll take the, um, the, the second question first, right? And, um, again, um, based on the COLA average, um, since we've incorporated, it, it's around roughly 3.5%, okay? And so the guardrails that we put in, you know, and the resolution, remember the resolution gives the town council the ability to change COLA. It's i- i- if, if we put in $500,000 and the CPI with the modifier is between 2 and, and 5%, then the, it does not require discussion or approval on the dais, okay? Now, if, if the CPI is, is lower than 2%, right? The resolution gives the council the ability to decrease, if it wants to, decrease COLA to meet that, uh, less than 2%, right? So i- what, what we tried to do was just put in percentages, so i- if it makes sense, right? So if COLA, if COLA, if the CPI with the modifier makes sense, we've tried to eliminate un- unnecessary discussion on the dais, right? So i- if, you know, i- if it is, if the CPI is less than 2%, the council always has the authority to be able to lower it if it wishes.
Right.
Now, the 5% goes-
Let's just one at a time, first of all, if we could.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
So, but, you know, it's removing the, to take the council, the, the political aspect out of it unless it's over 5%. 0 to 5 just lets it's automatic. Whatever COLA is, it's 0. You don't, so if it's less than 2, you're requiring the council to decide to drop it down, which is another, uh, discussion, could be a political thing. So for me, I would just say 0 to 5, but it's just my opinion on that because it also removes the, uh, the requirement for the council to get involved unless it's over 5%. So the purpose of the, of the, uh, resolution is to limit excesses, uh, and give the couns- council the opportunity to, uh, chime in on it. But below it, it's, I don't see why you need to give more and require a hearing. If, if it's just, you know, if it's COLA's 1.5, then why have a hearing? Give them 1.5. And by making that 0 to 5 just allows that to happen. So that's just my two cents on that.
Yes, I'm, you know, I'm certainly open to, um, yeah, if that's a, if that's a modi- if that's a suggestion that, uh, I'm certainly open to, to modifying the resolution to reflect that.
And the second, second item, the 5%?
Yeah, the 5% is because, um, that, that, what we were looking at was, was basically protecting somebody that has reached their salary maximum, right? And is no longer eligible for COLA, um, that they have, for example, if, if one year COLA is at 5%, right? And now you have an individual who has reached their, who is making more than $110,000 and has reached the max of their, um, of the top of their salary range, right? They are only getting merit. They are no longer getting COLA. So it, so we, i- in discussion, we've, again, it, it, what I'm trying to achieve is fairness. So here's an individual that may only be eligible today, you know, um, you know, for, um, a 3% merit because we're gonna, i- i- if, if, if it's set at 3%, that's all they can get. But, yeah, now they're looking at other individuals that are eligible for COLA, that are getting 5% COLA plus a whatever their merit is, right? So merit, we set merit at 5%, doesn't mean that everybody gets 5%, right? It's only 5%, uh, we give 5% of the payroll to the town manager to be able to, um, use as a merit base. And remember, we're changing the merit, uh, the way that we review people to a point system. So X amount of points, get X amount of percentage, more, more points, more percentage, more percentage, more percentage. So if you, let's say you get 100% on your, um, merit evaluation, you're eligible for a 5% merit, right? So that's why we put that 5% in there to, um, make it fairer for those who have reached the top of their salary range where, where they're not going to be eligible for COLA. Because remember, this resolution switches it. Today, they're eligible for COLA. With this resolution, they will not be eligible for COLA. They'll be eligible for merit. Now, again, if we give 5%, it, the resolution also reads that that can be adjusted by the, by the town council, all right? But i- i- it's the baseline of 5%. We give 5% to the town manager. Doesn't mean that he's gonna distribute that money amongst everybody. It may be that, you know, this person has, gets a review, 5%, 3%, 2%. We may be returning money back to the kitty because we didn't use all of the merit pay. But that, that was the philosophy behind it, to make it fairer for the high-end people that won't, won't be receiving COLA.
Again, so if you give a lump sum to the, the manager, here's 3% of the payroll, they can distribute it however they want. They can give somebody 1, 0, if they're not performing well. And if they're performing great, they can give them 7 or 8. We don't set limits on that. I would just say, as a general rule, that, you know, they have to make decisions. Uh, not everybody is the same, um, and you want to make sure that you are encouraged, uh, the reward of the harder workers and quite honestly discourage the poor, poorer work because they could get 0 for merit. It doesn't, you know, if you're, you're only focusing on the top percentage employees and worrying about whether they're gonna get that 5 or not, this really doesn't do that. Alls that does is say, hey, here's your, here's how much of, uh, the, the pie you can give, Ralph. And you, and, and now divvy it up as you want. So why should that divvy, that pie piece be 5% instead of 3%, which is more in line with industry standards? Ralph, what do you, what is the, the pay increase right now, generally, historically for the town?
Members of council, the way we operate right now is you have, uh, every employee's in a pay class. If you reach your maximum pay range, at, at that pay class.
Real quick, what's just the overall payroll budget? What is the average annual increase?
Um, are, okay, um, using the, using the numbers that we already know for next year, which the, the CPI using the-
Not CPI, not, not just straight merit.
Merit 3%.
3%.
3% on above satisfactory, uh, evaluation. That doesn't mean 3% across. There are folks that-
My, my proposal is this, you know, we still give them the 3%, but you give them freedom to give somebody 0 and using your point system, give some 5, 6, 7. So you reward the employees that are, that are having the, the greatest impact. And you, and you don't reward the people that are just showing up and, and going through the motions, so to speak.
Right, I, I, okay. I mean, I think we're, I think we're saying the exact same thing. I just think what, what, it's semantics, whether we, we give the, the manager 3% at the beginning of the budget or 5%. I mean, it's still going to be distributed, uh, the same way. So, but i- and to your point, if you want to leave that to the, to the manager's discretion where well, then we'd have to go back and, and revisit the way that the merit rating system is done because, I mean, what, what would be the highest percentage that the manager could give an individual?
That would really be up to him because he's got his pie in the department hands. So he's only got so much money to give out, right? And he can give it, he can give a majority of lion's share to one person who's, who's knocking out of the park, who's coming up with new innovative ideas and give 0 to the person who's just showing up for work or barely showing up for work. So he gets the same, the, the, he gets a, a piece of the pie to divvy up as he sees fit, to reward his employees as he sees fit. That way, we're not increasing our budget by adding 2% more percent to the merit piece.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I think we're saying, we're saying the exact same thing. The only thing that we're, we're, um, uh, you know, I think is different is whether, whether we would, uh, give upfront 3% or 5% to the, to the town manager, which is fine. I mean, we, we can, we can decrease that to 3%.
Let me get the, uh, buy-in from the rest of the council.
Uh, Mayor, can I just, as a point of clarification? So what the resolution does is that it directs us to work with the town manager to come up with something to come back to you with. So right now, there's no parameters necessarily in here other than this is the amount of, it's 5% from, from the merit pay pool. Come back with something, with some parameters. So Ralph will be sitting down and saying, okay, you know, this is how the system is going to work. We have to literally develop the policy. So I would be working with Vivian, with the HR director, to come up with something. So there's nothing tonight that's, that's here for you to look at.
That's helpful. I appreciate that.
But that's on, just on the merit.
Merit, on the merit, on the merit, yes, on the merit.
But, but the 5% is in here, which means that it would have, um, it's on, no, I'm sorry.
It is in the resolution.
Yeah, but it's, it's on, it's on-
For the merits.
Section 3A.
Yeah, but that's direction. That's, that directs the town manager. It's not, it doesn't authorize. So the only, the only thing, um, that this resolution, um, tonight, uh, corrects is COLA. But it does direct staff to come back to us with merit.
Anybody else have any input on this? Uh, Councilman Ramirez?
Sorry about that. Uh, Mr. Clerk, can you put the resolution up on the screen, please, for me? I'm, I am not a fan of CPI. I'm gonna tell you right now, but I am a, um, I like the way that, that you've gone about trying to, uh, make this palatable for everybody, uh, Vice Mayor. So I appreciate that. Scroll down to 3, section 3. Okay, um, I think, first off, I'm looking at 3A. And we have, uh, my thought process on this is a way to make it so that the employees don't max out as soon as they can, but still get the same money, which also protects the town. And it gives the, it, it, i- it's a win-win for both sides, really. If you look at the 5% on a, um, my thought on this was actually to make it 3%, which is in that ballpark that you were looking at. And then if you scroll down a little bit farther to the last section of that, you would have the, um, longevity portion of that. And that, to me, should be the 5% one. That's gonna be every five years. That would be a nice hit. The, okay, so go back up to A. A is for, um, merit. I like the fact that we're doing the lump something because it doesn't add a percentage to their, to their number, to their, to their base pay. And in doing that, it actually takes them longer to max out, so they can keep getting raises for a longer period of time. Which I'm, I'm on board with that. What the, what this also does, the resolution also does, the people that are capped out, when they hit their max, that's, that's kind of it. So I came up with the longevity portion of that, where they get a, a, almost an award for, for staying in, you know, 5, 10, or ending past 10 years, every five years, that would go towards that percentage. So that percentage gets up there. But you can't, you can't have people working for a long time, you know, because we're trying to keep people in the staff. We're trying to keep employees here. So, you know, how do you keep people here that say, listen, you're maxed out on, on COLA? You're maxed out, you know, you can only get merit, uh, and you have nothing else. And we're saying, okay, stay. You know, we got people, all the, all these municipalities trying to poach our people, you know? Because we hire some of the best, the best people in the world. You guys can smile on that one, all right? So, you know, we want to keep our employees. We want them to be happy here. So the resolution actually takes care of a lot of points that makes sense. And that's the whole thing I was trying to press when, when we brought this up, uh, the last meeting, the last workshop, is that we need something that makes sense not only for the employees, but also for the town, but also that's palatable for the residents. We had that, the CPI thing, and then, yes, it was an anomaly, you know? The 8%, one year, 10%, the next, you add merit on top of that. You know, you're looking at, at, you know, 15, 16, 17% raise, which, you know, you, you just don't see that in, in the, in the big picture of, of, of business, especially towns. So, yeah, we, we got some pushback on that, but we also had anomalies that were in the negative. What would it look like if we went to the employees and said, listen, we gotta take, uh, a half a percentage back? and said, listen, we got to take a half a percentage back from you? You know, you just can't do that. So I like the fact that we're setting kind of a range. You know, two to five, I was okay with. If you wanted to go one to five, what I mean, or one, or zero to five, I'm sorry. I'm, you know, I'm on board with that because it actually gives us a, a working parameter. And it also helps with budgetary, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Manager, helps with the budget and planning the budget. So I like 3A, but my change to 3A would be, and this is, this is, this is only under direction. So I think this is going to end up coming back to us. So this is something I would like to propose, is that the A would be the 3%, and then the last paragraph in there should be the 5%. You know, because I think the longevity should be a nice bonus in that, in that aspect. So I'd like to move-
No, there's no moving.
No, we're not.
Discussion is-
Let me, let me finish with the, and I'll ask for any amendments at the moment. But right now, I'm just getting some discussion.
I think it's not in that. I don't think it's in three, though. But I, I, I'll come back, I'll come back.
Okay.
If you want me to, that's fine.
Anybody else? Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I appreciate all the work that you and the manager and our town attorneys have put into this, to kind of come to a consensus based on all the feedback that was provided at the workshop. I think you did a great job on that. I do have some, some comments, some suggestions, some concerns that we can kick around and just have a discussion about, and then see where those kind of lead. So just for clarification purposes, just to kind of, to clear up something that Councilmember Ramirez said, merit, which even though that's not what we're theoretically looking at right now, but it's in the directions, that, the intention for that is to be paid as a lump sum or added to the base?
Merit, merit will always be added to the base salary.
Thank you.
Right? Unless they max out.
Okay.
Right? And then it becomes a lump sum.
Okay, now-
COLA shall always be paid in a lump sum.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for clarifying that for me. So if we're looking at the top here, letter A and letter E, as far as what the conditions are, they both, I understand the difference between them, but they both are kind of advocating for the same thing. My opinion on it would be, when we're looking at A and we're looking at the CAFR, and the proposal is if we put in less, you know, $499,999 or less, then COLA would not be automatic. It would have to come to the town council. My, my, my suggestion would be to eliminate A in that regard and just use E. Whereas if we have any sort of a proposed plan dip, or we're not, where we are not economically working and we need to go into our fund balance, then that would eliminate the automatic COLA. Because the thing with A is, let's say we don't put in 500,000. Let's say we only put in 200,000. Let's say we put in zero. We have a balanced budget, which we approved. So we did our job. We, we're not dipping. I don't necessarily think that our employees, if we have a balanced budget and they did everything to ensure by their actions that the, we're not dipping, we're staying where we were supposed to be at, should be automatically disqualified or ineligible unless the council acts just because of that. Now, if we need to dip into the reserve fund, or if we need to take money out because we're not balanced, then by all means, it's not automatic. I'm fine with that. That can then come to the council. I'm in full agreement with that. So my suggestion would be, within the way that the current resolution is worded, that line item A would just be eliminated, and that we keep the language from line item E and/or move line item E as the language for A, showing that in any sort of fiscal year, if we need to, for whatever reason, whether there's an environmental emergency, what have you, where we need to actually have a plan dip, dip into our reserve fund, as long as we're not negative. If we're at zero or positive, I think COLA should be automatic within the guidelines that you're setting. If it's negative, then I think that eliminates the automatic nature, and then it should come to the council for discussion.
Yeah, the only proposal- The only thing is, E really doesn't, it's not specific enough. You know, what is a negative economic condition? It doesn't specify.
And I would, I would just, I would specify if the town, for any reason, is in, in the red. It needs to-
That's what A does. So that's why I would say you would leave it because it actually sets what it is.
But it's, it's putting a limit of $500,000. So that, yeah, but, so if we're putting $0 in and we have a balanced budget, I'm not dipping, then I'm punishing my employees, even though we have a balanced budget.
So you're suggesting, then, it just rather than be $500, if we have to dip in?
Yeah.
Rather than that?
Correct. So, you're right. As long as we're not taking money out of our kitty, as long as we're not taking our fund to balance the budget because for whatever reason, things happen or we screwed up.
Okay.
Then I would suggest it should be automatic for those who are eligible.
Right.
And if we do have to dip, then at that point in time, it eliminates that automatic nature and then comes before the council. Would be, oh, I have a few more if I, if I may.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would say another question that I have was how the, or where the $110,000 salary number came from, if it was just a random number or if there was any sort of science behind it?
I mean, I could baffle you with brilliance and tell you that there was a ton of thought and process behind it, but it was really just a starting point. Yeah.
Then the question I have, in conversations I've had with the town manager, so we, from what I, what I understand, and Ralph can, can correct me if I'm wrong or if I'm off base here. The, the maximum salaries for each employee is set internally, based on an internal audit that we do every three years, based on a 40-mile radius of the town of Cutler Bay. Or other municipalities on its-
I, I think I would just, I would just correct that, that we do, we hire a consultant to do a pay plan study, not the word audit, but it'd be the pay plan study with, with Cutler Bay in a 40-mile radius. You're actual, and this year, we're due for it.
Okay. So my question would be, and this is just kind of an operational, you know, let's eliminate negative externalities as much as we can. In this current proposal, if, if you have somebody who has reached their max, and they're no longer eligible for COLA, and that's the case this fiscal year. But then we do a, a study, we do a, an audit or what have you, and that person's max now changes. And now they are eligible for COLA the next year? Or how, how do we address those types of things? Because if the only thing that's changed really is somebody else in another town makes more, why am I kind of sort of, I don't want to say punishing, but it's, it's almost a punishment for the person for that one year, if the next year they're eligible just based on something else that's happening outside of Cutler Bay?
Well, again, the $110,000 was a specific starting point, right? And it, one, the first thing is that right now, you have people that make less than $110,000 a year, that are at their max salary. They're not eligible for merit today. But this, remember, this, this proposal swaps it, right? So let's talk about the future tense. They're not eligible for COLA. And I really feel, again, anybody making less than $110,000, they're the ones that really need the COLA, right? And then those making, making greater than $110,000, as long as they haven't reached the max, they continue to receive COLA.
Okay.
Once they reach their max, they won't receive COLA. Now, if we do, if we do that pay plan study and things change, then someone may be eligible for COLA, for COLA again. But I don't think that's necessarily punishing somebody. I think that, you know, if you, if you make more than 110 and you reach the max of your salary, you're not eligible for COLA. And then the following year, all of a sudden, pay plans change. Well, that's a benefit. I mean, you just, you know, it's like, you know, it's a positive. I don't-
I would add to that, you know, COLA really is for the cost of living. There's, you spend a certain amount of money on cost of living, usually up to $100,000. Things above that, it's not really cost of living. That's luxury living almost. But, you know, in the industry, for a salary range relativity, so what is the range of your salary compared to others? And it's a competitive nature. That's why you wouldn't open up again. If the market starts going up and you don't, then you're going to have the risk of losing your employees because they could go someplace else, even if they are at the higher end of ours.
Yeah.
That's why I like opening up again of the salary range.
Absolutely. Okay, then, so just for clarification purposes, for employees that are making less than 110, even if they've reached their maximum, they will be eligible for COLA and merit. And, okay, okay, so that's good for clarification purposes. Do we have that language?
Can I intervene? I'm so sorry, just for clarification purposes.
Yes.
Okay, so if they have, so the way it's drafted, you know, we change it. But the way it's drafted is that if they are 110 and they've reached their maximum, no, they would not be eligible for COLA. So they get bumped down to that second section that is not in effect right now. It's just giving direction to the manager to work with the town attorney's office to come back with something to you-
Correct.
-to present to you. So at the moment, no, we can change it if you want it to be-
I would, I would feel comfortable if that's the, the, the plan, if that's the nature of people making less than 110 who have reached their max, would still be eligible for COLA, then I would suggest we amend to add that language into the, because right now, it's not written that way. And then also going off that same language, those who have exceeded 110 but have not hit their max would still be eligible for COLA.
Yes, exactly. It's written that way right now, so yes.
Okay. And then the only other comments that I would have-
Yeah, but, I'm sorry, just for clarification, but the, the, item D, it states 100, it, it, the guardrails are for 110,000 and greater.
Yes.
Right? So it, unless I'm wrong, it automatically assumes anything, anybody making less than 110 is still eligible for both.
Yes, that's true.
So we wouldn't necessarily have to state it because it's already stated.
It's assumed, but we could add it to make it clear.
It is assumed.
Yeah. Just like we have in the first section. So it says, you know, two to five, you don't need to come to the council. Five and above, you come to the council, even though we necessarily, we didn't need to, you know, spell it out in great detail.
Yeah, we could, we can, we can clarify that.
Okay. Then I would just say two other points. I would say, from a COLA standpoint, to be my, my perspective, and we'll see what you all think. I don't believe that town council members should be eligible for COLA, even if it's a small amount.
It's in the charter.
Yeah, that's not something to be changed by this.
Yeah, we can't change that.
Well, okay. Too bad.
But I'll take your percentage.
Oh, you can have, I'll split my percentage. Okay.
Take a dollar.
Yes.
So my only concern, and, and, you know, I just want to, at the very least, get it on the record what my concerns are as far as, you know, having certain caps or certain changes to this would be the, the fear of losing the cohesion and the experience that we currently have within our workforce that has been here. Perhaps if they get an opportunity that pays better, higher, immediately, and they leave for those opportunities and we replace them with somebody who doesn't have the same experience, whether professionally or even just in this town, understands how this town works, how the residents are, the businesses are. It is a risk that we will be taking. And I just want to publicly state that any changes that we do, if we happen to lose some of our employees that are very long-term or, you know, just very high-performing employees because they have opportunities elsewhere, more power to them. But it is a risk that we will take by putting in, say, 110,000 cap for certain individuals. That's just something to say out loud. I don't, I hope we don't, if this gets go, if this gets passed. I hope to, to keep as many of our employees as I can and provide them with a competitive salary relative to what the rest of the municipalities and the rest of the, the market dictates. But it is, that is something to, to consider.
Right, but, but it's not eliminating what this, what this is doing. It's not taking something away. It's just really changing, right? So instead, so those that make more than 110 now and have reached their salary max are not eligible for merit. They're eligible for COLA.
Okay.
This just, anybody that makes more than 110 and reaches their salary max, it just flips it, right? So quite frankly, to the mayor's point, if you've reached your max, now you're eligible for merit. And to the manager's discretion, you may get more than 5%. You may get 6% if you're doing an outstanding job. So technically, this, by, by this swapping it, it actually incentivizes those that are at the cap to be able to do a great job and receive more than a standard COLA. Because if a standard COLA comes in at 3%, let's say, then those that are more than 110 that have reached the cap are only going to get 3% because they're not eligible for merit. But based on that review that's going to come in section three, and at the manager's discretion, they could get 5 or 6%. So actually, this is more of an incentive. Not only that, eh, you're adding in a longevity step as well. So, I, I mean, I took into consideration those concerns and tried to make it more incentivized for those who have it longevity and, and those who have reached that salary cap. In no way does, the way that this was written was the intent to ever, um, you know, harm somebody, but to, to, to actually give them more of a benefit.
Okay. Okay, then that's, that's pretty much all I have to say outside of those, those few changes that we discussed, language-wise.
Did you have something?
Of course.
Yeah, well, of course I have something to say about this because uh, I wasn't real thrilled that we were looking at this. I, I didn't feel like our compensation was broken. Um, you know, uh, I didn't. There's a lot of things that are being proposed that weren't even brought up in the workshop. The longevity was only briefly touched on by council member Ramirez, and here, here we now have this whole longevity thing that I didn't learn about until the agenda was published. You know, I agree with the zero to 5% um, window, um, and for the ceiling, for the, for the, um, the COLA, okay? I, I think that that's great. Um, section 2A, I don't like the implementation of the $500,000 number. Um, I do agree that 2A and 2E are kind of redundant with the exception of that number. You know, there are years that we have issues that are unforeseen, like Blue Heron Park right now, right? And so, we, in, in that year, may not in particular be able to put $500,000 back into our general fund, but we have a balanced budget and we're sitting on $28 million. You know, why wouldn't we give our employees COLA in that instance? You know, I mean, we're not talking about millions of dollars, we're talking about, um, a cost of living adjustment. So that's my comments on 2A, 2B. I don't, I don't dislike the zero to 5%. I do love the idea that we have the ability, or council at that whatever time, will have the ability to have a discussion if we want it to go over 5%. You know, the way the memo was worded, the memo that, uh, this was attached to, it, it words that and under background and analysis, it says that CPI sometimes was higher than 10%, and that implies that it was over 10% more than one time, and it was not. It was 10.1% one time, it was an anomaly. Um, and so I just wanted to put that on the record because this, that memo was public record. The implication is not that it happened, the implication reads that it happened more than one time, and it was 10.1%, which it should be pointed out that the social security number was almost 9%. So we were in line at that 10.1, we were just 1% off of, or generally 1% off of what the national standard was using, even using the CPI for Fort Lauderdale and Miami. So I just, I, I, I felt like I needed to point that out. Also, in the workshop, um, there was a comment that the way COLA was being calculated, which is kind of off the table now, was, uh, not, not in line with the original intent of 17-30. I went back and I listened because this is the kind of informed leader that I like to be. I've listened to 2016 and 2017 council meetings because I wasn't there. I didn't know how this change in COLA came up in 2017. I asked for those recordings, I listened to those recordings. And, um, at no point did anyone have any concerns with the change to the, the way we calculated COLA, so I'm glad we're sticking with that. Nobody in any of these recordings voiced a concern with that. The only concern that was mentioned was Mayor Bell talked about the change in the way we were calculating COLA because it was going to help the morale of our employees. And that was what I was discussing during our workshop. The, these conversations have affected the morale of our employees, no doubt, and, and I just, I wanted to point that out. The $110,000 number, I don't, I don't get where you got that. $110,000 for, let's say, who I was at one point in my life, a single mother with two children going to college. I had day-to-day expenses in my household. And now all of a sudden, I'm used to getting a cost of living adjustment, and now all of a sudden I can't because I'm over $110,000. I, we talk about being fair, I find that very unfair to our employees. We don't know what they do with their salary. We give them a salary to do their job. We don't know if with that $110,000 and they're maxed out, they're paying a full-time nurse at their home to take care of an infirm parent. We don't know what they're doing with that money. I do know that cost of living affects everybody, whether or not you're making 110 or you're making 85. So, I, I don't like touching the cost of living. Our employees have been receiving this. I, I don't think it should be flipped from merit to merit from cost of living, I really don't. Um, and, and that's, you know, my, my opinion. I have just a couple of more, couple more points. What we're, what we're, you know, I spoke to a resident after our workshop. And the resident actually commented that he felt that anyone who made over a certain dollar amount didn't necessarily need COLA, and that COLA was just for low-income households. And while COLA does help the low-income households that receive it, it also helps every single household that receives it. I don't think because you make $110,000, you don't care about the price of eggs. I, I, I think that that is, um, narrow-minded. I think that it does feel to these employees, and I'm making this assumption, I don't think I'm wrong, it does feel like they're being punished somehow. They're used to the compensation package that, that we've been giving them. You also mentioned, Vice Mayor, that you spoke with local municipalities. Are they capping COLA at 110? Like, uh, what was their com, the municipalities' comments on how they're dealing with COLA?
So, in the municipalities that, that I spoke with, um, they don't, the, anybody who reaches the top of their salary range is no longer eligible for COLA. So individuals in other municipalities who are making $55,000 and have reached the top of their salary range are not eligible for COLA. The, this $110,000 was a starting point, and what the $110,000 starting point did was free up those making less to be eligible to receive COLA again regardless if they have, have reached their cap or not. And let's, you know, let's be honest, I think, we're talking about COLA like it, it is an industry standard. COLA, Allison, right, you can back me up. The, the only organizations that use COLA are government organizations, okay? Uh, collective bargaining units, and those defense contractors or large government contractors that are un, unionized. The private sector does not participate in COLA. So, uh, uh, we have to deal with COLA because we're a government agency, and we want it to be fair, and we want to be competitive. So, I mean, you know, my personal feelings about COLA are not, are not relevant here in this discussion. What's relevant is trying to make everything fair across the board. So, again, $110,000 was a starting point to kind of free up those that, uh, are below that, that they can start receiving COLA again. I'm, again, 110's a starting point. It was never meant to be necessarily, uh, there's no scientific method behind it. If, if the council feels that they would like to raise it, they, they can raise it. If you want to eliminate it, you can eliminate it. But here's, if you eliminate, this is the, this is the challenge that you're going up against. Eliminate the 110,000, and now those who are making less than 110,000 are not going to be eligible for, um, if, if this passes, they won't be eligible for COLA because it switches it. So I was just trying to make it fair for those. If you want to change it to 120, 550, I mean, I, that's, that's fine, it was a discussion point.
And, and again, I'd like to point out that you do have a give-back with the longevity pay and making them eligible for merit, so it just kind of switches it.
Yeah, and you have a comment about the longevity pay, if I may.
Yeah.
There's another couple of things I want to hit. I don't normally talk this much up here, but I feel very passionate about this. You know, there has been some chatter about, um, one salary in town in particular that will never be touched because there's no cap on it. And that would be our town manager's salary. There's been online chatter about that. There is no cap on his salary. In having these discussions with him, I, I mentioned that to him, and he was amenable to our having discussions about possibly capping. There's two salaries in this town that have no caps.
Right, but those are under contract.
They're, they're contract, right.
Mayor.
But some of the residents' comments were made because they're trying to control that compensation in particular, and none of this discussion will ever control that comp, that compensation, the way it's currently, um, happening. Also, with regard to the longevity pay, that's nothing we've done here before. This was not just discussed in detail in the workshop. So the increase in the merit raise percentage and now longevity pay, these are all additional tax dollars that we're going to be spending. And I, I, I just don't think this has been studied enough for us to, um, agree that it's a great idea. I don't know what the fiscal hit is going to be on the town, and I think that that's information we need to have. Um, I don't like the idea of a percentage being given for longevity. I think that, and my reason for that is, uh, I like the idea of maybe a dollar amount, I'm just picking, like, let's say you've been with us 10 years, we're going to give you a $1,000 lump payment. Because if a receptionist has been with us and been loyal to us for 10 years, and a director has been with us and has been loyal to us for 10 years, and they've both done a good job, there is a humongous difference in their salaries, and so giving them a percentage of that salary isn't the same reward. They should all have the same reward. That's my opinion on the longevity. So, I have, I have concerns about the fiscal impact some of these changes will have on the town. I'm not, uh, I'm not particularly comfortable with 2D. I think that that needs to be studied a little more closely and brought back to us. Um, I would like that deferred if we could. But, um, those are my comments. I would also suggest, though, that we also add, like, maybe a section four to clarify that the town manager will implement the directions. Just make, make the, the, that a little bit more clean when a layperson is reading it, but.
Well, it, it, okay, so in, in response to the longevity, uh, portion, that, that was, uh, based on, um, a comment that was made in, in the, uh, in the, in the workshop and was specifically tied to merit. And again, if, if you look at this, this resolution, the resolution only really looks to modify 1730, right? The COLA, uh, but we did, in this resolution, we did want to give direction to town staff to, uh, further clarify the merit portion of it. Because currently they are going, uh, under the merit review process where they are changing how they, um, review the employees, right? So that is still, uh, ongoing with, with human resources. And we wanted, we wanted to give clear direction to the town manager, um, and town staff to be able to consider these changes as they redevelop the merit, uh, review process. Because that involves handbook changes and, and things like that. So we needed to be very clear, um, as we make those merit review changes, that these processes were included because of the, um, the, uh, impact to the handbook. You know, so I, I just want to make sure that that, so there's two, there's two things to this, right? There's the, there's the, uh, the portion amending 1730, um, and then there's the direction, right? So the direction, uh, has, the, the direction is, is simply that, we're not stating any policy or creating a policy regarding merit uh, as part of this, uh, resolution.
Well, let me, we've kind of been all over the place with this. Um, you know, there's things that we seem to be on agreement of. It's, it's setting COLA to a specific, uh, reference, right? Cost of living judgment, uh, adopted by, what did, what did you put in there? The CPI table, that's number.
Yeah, CPI with the modifier.
Down. The things that we, I think we also agreed in section 3A that their allocation of the payroll would be 3%, let the manager distribute it as is, where we still have some disagreement, or at least I can't pinpoint, um, is the maximum of 110, but that's also, which also allows for merit increase in longevity pay. And I really don't know where we're at, so.
Can I, can I clarify something before you move?
If, if you're quick, because we're just going to be just hitting our wheels here.
Really quick. Um, I just want to clarify on the merit. Uh, we were talking about lump sum. I don't think that should be added to the base pay because then it would take longer for the employees to actually, to hit their cap, which actually helps them in the long run. I mean, that seemed like it, but it does help you in the long run. And the other thing is, um, I was going to make a suggestion about moving, uh, D down into the direction so that the town manager can actually take a look at it, come back with a financial analysis on what that would cost and everything. And I think that would kind of clarify, clear up a lot of the things in this whole.
Moving it down there won't do any good because it needs to be in a resolution, um, for it to be effective. But, but leave it for a gray area, and this, and I think the, the point was to kind of lock it down.
And the, and the, and the other thing too, real quick, is that you want merit added to the base pay because your base pay is then added to the FRS. Uh, lump sums are not eligible in the FRS, so that's why cost of living is lump sum and merit is.
I, I, I personally like a lot of these things in here, Vice Mayor. Um, you know, I would just ask that you amended to, uh, pu, put it zero to five before we have to look at it because it's just tied to CPI directly, and also that the pool will be 3% of total cost as it has been in the past. And let the manager see fit. The rest of the things I'm fine with, um. And, you know, I, I don't know if we're going, if anybody wants to ask for any more amendments to that, but if not, I'd think that somebody should be making a motion, uh, or if you want to make the motion, Vice Mayor, on that with those changes.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, I just, the, the reason I'm looking at D like that is because the longevity hasn't even been established yet. So I really think it would be important if the town manager can actually study that, and, and if we can, you know, approve everything, and just kind of move D into the discussion so that he has that, or the direction section, so that he actually can, can vet it out.
Because you can't, because D has the, D, D has, uh, direct implications on COLA. You can't remove it.
And what do you mean by, uh, the longevity portion has not been locked in?
Hasn't been, we haven't, we haven't even voted to actually add that in. It was a discussion, we're, we're talking about adding it in. We're talking about trying to create what the, what the numbers were going to be for that, and we haven't even had the chance to, to vet, find out what the, what the financial, uh, cost would that be to us. So I don't say, do, okay, so we have to look at ourselves, are we moving too fast? Do we bring this back again in a month? Or, or, and, and let, let them do their, do some homework here?
You can make a motion to, to defer it if you like, but, um, and again, you have.
Well, somebody else would have to.
But what do you?
Somebody else would have to because I've already spoken.
I don't under, I, I don't understand your concerns about deferring, uh, 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 item, uh, uh, D, 110,000.
No, it, it's not even, it's not even that number, it's the fact that, that we're, we're, we're putting into this resolution the longevity pay, which I'd be happy about.
So we can, okay, so what exists right now is COLA and longevity, I mean, COLA and merit.
Yes.
Okay, so i, i, if you want, we can remove from D longevity pay, right? And, and then that, once, once, um, section three, uh, comes back before us, right? So what you're tying, what you're doing is you're, you're tying longevity, uh, into merit, right? Which is going to come back before us because longevity and merit has to be, uh, part of the review process. And if that's the case, and if, if that's what your concern is, then we would just simply remove the, uh, anything referencing lo, longevity and D.
Let's make it easier, let's make it easier. Let's put language in at the end of that, uh, where it says, uh, uh, merit pay, longevity policies respectively, as, as, um, when these are, when these are approved and put into policy. Let's put language in or something along that line, and that, that fixes the whole problem. And we leave it and we leave, and just, just make, just put some language there because it, it's, it's not there yet. So let's, let's put language in there so that when it does become part of this.
I see, I see what you're saying.
Okay, that just fixes the.
Allison. Yes, I think that's, I think what, I think I understand what you're trying to say. So basically what he's saying is effectively, this wouldn't really have any effect as far as the people making 110 who've reached their max because we do not have the policies in place yet to give them anything. So when October 1st rolls around, for example, they are not going to benefit from this particular provision because we do not have those policies in place.
No, they're, no, they're, they're only not going to benefit from the longevity pay.
Right, the longevity.
They, they will benefit from merit because merit is currently in, in the process.
Right, so the status quo would, would stay in effect, but what he's saying is that because this is, this is contemplating that it will be the merit pay policy that we implement, that we future tense, and the longevity pay policy. So he's saying because those aren't in effect yet, then we should probably add something, some, some language that says upon creation or upon adoption by the council or something like that.
Could you, Allison, could you make that specific just to longevity policy?
To the longevity, yes. So we keep merit pay, status quo, and then longevity would be, okay, once it's adopted, okay.
I would also ask that we up, up the dollar amount, the, the 110. I think it should be higher than that.
Disagreement with that, but.
You would be?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Are you with me on this? Okay, so, um, amending, amending resolution 1730, section two, um, strike through lower than 2%. So would now read, provide however, that any increase to COLA, the town staff shall not be higher than 5% without the town council approval.
Correct, okay.
Okay. A.
3A?
2A. Remove, remove the designation of $500,000, okay? And it should state annual compensation, the financial report for the preceding fiscal year shows a net change in the, a negative net change. Please add the word negative. 2B. Proposed increase to the COLA for town staff shall be between zero and, wait. Proposed increases to the COLA for town staff that are between 0 and 5% do not require approval by the town council. D. Add, add the language, long, um, but we have, we, right, but it's going to be motion tonight. Provide, uh, town, um.
Was created and adopted?
Yes, once created and adopted, it's on council, but just the longevity pay policy, not the merit. So merit stays status quo.
Okay, um, in the town's merit pay and longevity policies respectively, once longevity is created and adopted by the town council under section 3A.
Do you want to get rid of?
Uh, the, the, I, I, I look towards you for that, uh, okay. So, um, section 2E, please strike through E. Strike through E. Section 3A. There shall be an allocation of 3% of payroll. Okay, um, in respect to Councilmember Lord's comments regarding longevity and the way that that is to be calculated and distributed, shall we just simply give direction to staff to work on that? Okay. So, we, um, we, we don't, do we have to make any changes to, um, 3E? Okay, uh, there shall be, uh.
So you're just, just giving directions, so you can just basically say the, um, the town manager shall work with the town attorney's office to develop a longevity pay, uh, policy.
Okay, so strike, strike through E, E will now read, um, direction given to the town manager to work with staff to create a longevity pay policy. So that way, Councilman Lord, is that?
We will bring that back to you and you can bet it, we'll talk about it and then.
Ralph.
Mayor, Members of Council, if we could just, uh, look at item D, just to give you some, some context. If you're currently an employee who's over 110, right, which is, uh, all of our department heads, and you have reached the max, you will not be eligible for a COLA.
Correct, you'll be eligible for merit, that's what we had discussed.
But it's not in place yet, the merit policy's not in place, so I just wanted to make sure.
But no, it's the current merit.
The current merit policy we have, Vice Mayor, if you're at the max, you get zero. That's our current policy, merit.
Oh, because it's.
You're maxed.
Because it's not flipped yet.
Exactly, so you will be impacted employee in D. So, uh, again, the number 110 to 130, whatever, call it what it is, it's department heads. The, but there will be an employee that will be affected because the policy has not been in place yet. Understand the debate of the policy, but there will be an employee now that, because the merit policy hasn't been in place yet for a potential lump at a merit, again, dealing with reality, October 2nd, that employee gets zero. Again, dealing with reality, October 2nd, that employee gets zero.
Yeah, you know, we've given a lot of direction here and made a lot of changes, Vice Mayor. Do we want to let them come back to us with the changes to see if we want to finalize these things? We've been all over the place on it. Make sure we can wrap our mind around it. Again, it's entirely up to you, just making that.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I think the town manager brings up an excellent point. We weren't, we weren't considering that because I actually, to tell you the truth, I thought that the merit was going to be part of this resolution. And so that's why D made sense, but now that it came before us in its direction, it, it, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't apply.
Correct, and that's what I was trying to get that clarification because I mean, and I think that's where Councilmember Ramirez was trying to go, saying maybe, you know, we study it for sure, absolutely, but the way this is written and I'm sure, you know, Allison, Allison could understand that where it says like there's a two-part, there's a COLA part and there's a direction part.
And that, that's exactly why I asked for that section.
Yeah, I, I certainly apologize for the lengthy discussion, but I would respectfully ask to defer.
All right, we have, we have a motion to defer and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, this is, we'll defer to the next meeting certain and that way you can bring it back with.
If need to, yeah, we need to bring it back with the merit.
Okay, all right, we've got direction, Allison, on that one. Okay.
And we're closely with our town attorney, Brink.
Okay, all right, that's all we have on our agenda today. Just had one last thing I wanted to bring up and look for council direction on. So Old Cutler Road, it's our jewel. You know, we redesigned it. We have a lot of activity going on. Actually, if you look at Old Cutler Road, it's the major commercial, it's the only commercial section, yeah, it's the only major commercial section in all of Old Cutler Road. And we know we've got a lot of stuff going on. We, we got Flanagan's coming in. We've been working hard to bring additional restaurants in and we're still trying to do that. And, you know, we got, we got a great park going in, Legacy Park, which is an amazing project. But right now there's, there's some things that are preventing some restaurants from moving in there and it's quite honestly, it's the parking requirements. Right now we're requiring one space for, for every 50 square feet. And we all know Cutler Bay is a, you know, it's golf cart friendly community now. We're trying to get more towards people walking to locations by providing restaurants closer to the, to the center of the town where people find it much easier to convince, can get there a lot easier. So to make it easier for, you know, for us to recruit the type of restaurants that want to be there, that are finding it difficult to be there because of the parking situation, I'd like to see if we could work with our staff to look at our, amending our land development regulations in that area to see if we can tweak the parking regulations to make it more amenable to what the area actually has to offer. We designed it as a, you know, a walkable friendly community and, you know, requiring parking spaces rather than, you know, golf cart parking spaces, those type of things is something I think that would be benefits. So with your blessing, I'd like to work with staff to see if we can amend those regulations. Anybody in disagreement with that? No? All right, well, thank you very much. I will do that and really quick, go ahead.
Okay, I will make this quick, but I, I feel like this is something that's really important for, for me to discuss. I got my revised flood insurance policy this week in the mail, right? And I want to point out the work that our Public Works Department has been doing on our flooding, which has afforded us a CRS rating of three, which is unheard of, unheard of. That CRS rating gives us a 35% discount on our flood insurance as the town manager touched on earlier today. So my full risk premium was $2,200 plus, right? With the discounts and the CRS rating discount, my premium for the year is $997. And I thank you, Cutler Bay, for all your hard work. I thank Alfredo Quintero, Yonier Vega and the rest of Public Works because that is $1,100 in my pocket and I appreciate that. And then real fast, the last thing I wanted to talk about was in 2014, then Vice Mayor Loizel held a workshop to find unclaimed property for the residents of Cutler Bay, right? That's personal to me because she actually came to my house. She was a family friend. She ran our names and our, our information through the program and I told her there's no way there's money out there that I don't know about. There was $1,700 out there that my 19-year-old son had that we forgot about, was in a bank account my mom opened and she's since passed away and we forgot about the bank account. So I asked the town manager to find out how much unclaimed, you know, see if he can, he can check with the Florida Department of Financial Services. And as of right now, for the three zip codes that are in Cutler Bay, there's 44-plus thousand claimable accounts in the amount of $8.8 million that the residents of Cutler Bay don't know about. So with, with the permission of council, I would like to hold another workshop and maybe see if we can regain that $8.8 million for our residents.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, so thank you for your time.
All right, all right. With that, this meeting is adjourned.